Okay, we're now live. Welcome everybody to the fourth hearing for the inquiry into the integrity of the New South Wales Biodiversity Offset Scheme. The inquiry is examining a range of issues including the effectiveness of the scheme to halt or reverse the loss of biodiversity, the administration and regulation of the scheme, and the use of offsets for major projects. Before I commence, I'd like to acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation who are the traditional custodians of the land on which the parliament sits. I also acknowledge the traditional owners of the lands from which all meeting participants join us today. I pay my respect to the elders past and present and extend that respect to all Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people watching. Before we commence, I'd like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live via the parliament's website. A transcript of today's hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, media representatives are reminded that they must take responsibility for what they publish about the committee's proceedings. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments he may make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it's important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry in terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018. There may be some questions that a witness can only answer if they had more time or with certain documents to hand. In these circumstances, witnesses are advised that they can take a question on notice and provide an answer within 21 days of receipt of the transcript. I now welcome our first witnesses, who we had the benefit of briefly hearing from on the 10th of December last year, and it was very brief, hence why they are back. I thank you for taking the time to appear again before this committee, and given you've all appeared previously, you'll be giving evidence today under your previous oath or affirmation. And I will just let you know that we have members who are of the committee who are appearing remotely as well, so some of the questions will be from members. We have Penny Sharp from Labor, from the government. We have Shane Mallard, Catherine Cusack, and Scott Barrett. And that's all. Justin hasn't joined us yet, no. So, yes, and then we're all here. Okay, so we might start, I know you have made opening statements, but you may wish to do so again. So, Mr. Steinbaker?
Steinbaker.
Steinbaker, sorry.
That's all right.
Would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
I'll make it very brief.
Thank you.
I'd just like to reiterate that a lot of the issues that I see in the responses to the scheme have been largely to do with things that are not related to the biodiversity offset scheme, relate to other legislation that applies to land clearing in New South Wales. And that one of the big advantages this scheme has is that it provides the opportunity for landholders to gain a diversified income through getting an income from administering and farming biodiversity, as we call it in our business. The opportunities that this provides gives the landholders a desire or an interest in protecting the environment on their properties, and it is that financial benefit that the scheme itself provides the best opportunity to address in the future. It also provides a guaranteed conservation outcome, which meets the obligations that Commonwealth has signed us up to under the Convention for Preservation of Biodiversity under the UN. And with that, I thank you for your opportunity to provide this hearing with another response.
Thank you very much for that. Mrs. Davies, Mr. Davies, would either of you like to...
I'd just really like to briefly, Andy gave an opening statement at our last hearing. We're here to represent up to 12 biobank owners or stewardship site owners, which is spread all throughout the state, and our submission does address the actual terms of reference, which we'd like to talk about today, or you can ask us questions. I just wanted to put our personal position because I think there's a misunderstanding. Well, what's happened is things have got a bit skewed. We are a multi-generational farming family from the Sydney Basin area. We inherited our farm, which was unprofitable. It already had a conservation, we were already interested in conservation, so we had about 25 hectares that was already conserved, and that had expired. When biobanking came along, it gave us a great opportunity to expand that. We doubled it, and we've had the biobank operating ever since. And we're all really attached to it, and it's just a lovely area. And we've been able to combine that really happily with our farming operations. And that was, that was our driving force, was to be able to continue and expand our conservation, and actually have something to assist us in from making an unprofitable farm into a profitable one. So it wasn't a agreed thing or take the money and run. It was actually what the scheme was set up originally to do. Yeah, I just want to make that clear, that that's where we're coming from. The others are scattered throughout the state, and we've got a fairly reasonable response to the terms of reference.
Thank you very much, and thank you both for your comprehensive submissions and the recommendations that are contained in there. They're very helpful for the committee. I will just kick off with a, just looking at your submission, Mr. and Mrs. Davies, I've, I've, you talk about market imperfections, and you make specific mention here of government infrastructure agencies manipulating the price down, brackets, example, seeking extensions of time or flexibility over veg types instead of meeting the market. Then you go on to also talk about developers being able to pay the biodiversity conservation trust for credits as a cheaper option instead of buying credits themselves. We've heard a fair bit about that. Did you just want to explain, go into more detail about the, how a government infrastructure agency is manipulating the price down, and what's the solution to that?
Well, that's my stuff. Well, it's his stuff too, he knows a lot about it. Our experience has been, and our personal experience has been, it's being approached by purchasers for credits, asking us what our price is, which is based on the published price, and being told, no, we can buy them for less through the BCT. It's pretty simply that. The BCT, yeah, I could go on, but it is actually...
Can you give an example of specific credits you're talking about?
No, I can't remember exactly what they were. They were ones...
Credit types?
Yeah.
C W, Cumberland Plain Woodland, Shell Sandstone Transition Forest, you know, the...
Could you just move the microphone closer to you?
Sorry.
You can move it closer to you.
Cumberland Plain Woodland, Shell Sandstone Transition Forest, River Flat Uclip Forest, the high, the highly, the most valuable credit types in the state. In particular, Cumberland Plain Woodland, which is critically endangered, and one of the most under threat credit types or ecosystem types in the state. Its price reflects that, however, and it's the most highly traded credit type so far, I believe.
And so you have, you have purchasers approaching you, asking you how much you're essentially selling it for. How are you setting your price again?
Well, based on, the biggest influence on pricing at the moment is the biodiversity offset payment calculator, because that's a price ceiling that's been put in place. So, we know if we go above that, you can't, you're not going to get a sale. Prior to that, it was the OEH-administered credit register, which had every sale recorded. So you could go through there and see vaguely what past trades have been, and then you can take into account your own personal issues in regards to the value of your land, you know, how much you'd get for it if you were to sell it to a developer, which is a viable option in the Sydney Basin. These are all the factors that you need to take into account to determine the price that you want for your credits.
So Cumberland, so Cumberland Plain Woodland, then, you're saying you look at the calculator, kind of set the price in a range of things, is there's an upper cap? How does the BCT, then, if they've got Cumberland Plain Woodland credits, how are they pricing you out? Like, how is that working?
Well, they're just an easier option, and...
Do you mean in just, in terms, yes, in terms of developers just going, that means...
Just chuck money at the BCT and move on. And that's, there's no need for the BCT to go through an assessment process, there's no need for them to employ a consultant, to then liaise with the consultant and the BCT to get that agreement across the board. There's no, none of the issues, they can take 12-plus months to get to an actual registered biobank. The BCT just have the fund, money goes in there.
Yeah, Mr. Steinbaker?
If I may add to that, one of the issues that a lot applies here is that the BCT doesn't actually have to hold the credits to sell the obligation for the credit. So, whereas as stewardship holders, we actually have to hold those credits before we're able to sell them, or forward sell them on the basis that we're going to get the agreement signed with the BCT. So, the BCT is operating to trade an entity it doesn't yet have, that it then has to purchase from us, and it will add its own administrative charges to what it buys those credits from us for. So, no matter what, that ceiling price that's set by the pricing calculator also acts to depress the market and the opportunity, and what is a market instrument, of the landholder to say, this is what it costs me to actually generate this credit, this is what it actually costs to do the weed control, the pest control, the administration of fire. There's a whole range of activities in Table Six of the Biodiversity Assessment Method, the BAM, that identify what it is the landholder that is in charge of the stewardship site has to actually implement to generate the credits. And then there's Table Seven in the BAM, which is those activities that allow us to generate more credits per hectare to meet our obligations of those costs that are met, that are identified in the total fund deposit. Then you've got other factors on top of that, like taxation, credits are subject to capital gains tax, so instantly 30% of every trade goes to Canberra. So, even though it might look like it's a sizable transaction, it's nowhere near that large when it actually lands in the bank account of the person trying to administer their conservation outcome.
Is it enough?
Yeah.
Is it enough? You could talk about rules. Okay.
Yeah, okay. So, you've also got in your, you've also got in your submission, this, and I think this is kind of getting to, kind of building on that, that the apparent, aware of an apparent practice by commercial developers, land banking and developing high-value land parcels, but then monetizing the need for offsets by leaving the biodiversity conservation trust holding, in your, in your language, holding a bag of money from a share of the developers' profits that do not fully cover the cost, and if it needed, for the BCT to acquire the necessary biodiversity offsets in the market. So, developers are kind of getting away with, with clearing a bunch of really threatened land. You've got that threatened land or threatened vegetation ecosystem type on your property, but you're not getting enough money from the system, you're saying, to potentially, like...
We're not getting a sale.
Yeah.
Because the sale, well, no, because the sale's going to the BCT, and then the BCT are saying...
So when you're saying you're not getting a sale, what's stopping you then from, like, you'd be pretty tempted just from a purely commercial, you know, commercial frame, to want to sell that land to developers? Don't, don't do that, because I'm a greens, I don't want you to do that.
No, we don't want to do that.
That was our actual obvious purpose in entering a biobank agreement in the first place. We've, we've got like a rather extended family who all have a great interest and attachment and love for our farm. We could have subdivided it, we could have cleared half of what that area is that's biobanked, we could have just put a bulldozer through it. But our choice is to conserve it in perpetuity and to keep the farm in one piece.
I suppose one of the issues is, we're not getting the sale because we're not getting the exposure to the buyers. The only exposure to the buyers is the BCT. So the fund is hoovering up all of the credit sales.
Do you know whether there's, do you know how many credits there are within the BCT for Cumberland Plain Woodland, for example, that haven't been...
Well, there's no credits in the BCT.
They don't exist.
They don't own any credits. They own an obligation.
Sorry, in terms, sorry, wrong question, no, in terms of the money paid by developers, are you aware of that? Is that transparent?
I don't know.
For the clearing of Cumberland Plain Woodland?
I think in their annual report, they publish how much, I don't know whether they, they detail that.
Mr. Steinbaker is shaking his head.
I'm not sure whether that information is publicly available. There's a lot of, when the discussion earlier, in the earlier sessions, was talking about insider trading, the BCT is in reality the only organisation that in this entire scheme has the potential for an insider trading role, because they are asked by the developers to take on an obligation, and they administer the sites and create, or approve the creation of sites with landholders. So they know what credits are wanted and what credits are available. So, the BCT is the only organisation that actually has an insider trading role, and, or a potential for an insider trading role. Of course, I don't know whether they do or not, but they are the only ones who can, because a developer has to have its approval through the conditioning authority, which is either local government or major projects division of planning, and the creation of credits only occurs through the BCT. But when a developer asks for the obligation to be taken on by the BCT, the BCT then gets sole observation of what credits are wanted by the market. And by having this pricing mechanism that was established by DPIE, OEH, they have a price that they claim they have to put to those, those credits when the obligation is requested. And that's a big part of the scheme's failure, is that those prices aren't necessarily reflective of the actual costs of doing the outcome. And when the scheme changed from the biobanking scheme to the biodiversity offset scheme, and the imposition of those two tables that I mentioned before, Table Six and Table Seven in BAM came into play, the actual obligations of doing those management actions was not reflected in the price of what the old credits, the BAM credits were selling for, was because there was no, there was a very limited set of actions that you had to do in regard to that scheme. But now, there's all these actions you have to do that add to these costs, but they just looked at, or the economists at DPIE looked at what the credits were selling for, and how many were generated per hectare, and how many were generated per hectare under the new scheme, and said, oh, well, it's 10 under the old scheme, it's five under the new scheme, we'll just double the price. But failed to take into account that the actual costs of generating those credits tripled. So if you're only doubling it, then, as what's happened with our site up north, we are expected to sell our credits to the BCT for a value that is 40% of the production cost. So, because it, the old pricing, which was already administered by, shall I call them, internal trades administered by RMS, particularly for the Pacific Railway upgrade, resulted in them undertaking the surveys on landholders' lands, giving the landholder a price for their TFD based on the activities costed by RMS, and the landholder was given the obligation to, or the opportunity to sign up for it. And then they're given an excursia payment to cover opportunities of dropping land value and things like that, that never actually got reflected in the credit cost. So the credits that we had, which when we entered into the scheme in 2017, we commenced, we actually have our agreement from January 2019, the, we worked on, our credits were going to cost us somewhere in the vicinity of about $3,000 apiece to generate, because it's about $12,000 per hectare for in perpetuity management, for the activities that, as an ecologist, I see need to be done to maintain this vegetation in its best condition. And it's that improvement that is what is actually sold, the management of improvement. So, if you've tried to sell these credits at $3,000 apiece, and then the RMS sells the same credits, or purchases the obligations from landholders that they've entered into an agreement with, to purchase the same obligations at between $700 and $1,400 a credit, how can I compete? Because those prices that the RMS traded for are what got recorded on the registers, these are the prices that these credits trade at.
And can I quickly jump in there? Just, and then I'll go to Ms. Sharp in a second for questions. The landholders that you're saying are selling credits for $700 to $1,200 or whatever compared to your 3,000, is that because those landholders are not bothering with obligations that you would be doing in terms of improving the, improving the land, which you're saying that's, that's basically what you're selling?
That I cannot answer.
How do they get away with that? It's a genuine, like, do you know how they get away with that compared to what you're...
Well, the reason they got away with it was because it was administered under the old scheme, the biobanking scheme, where there wasn't that obligation of particular activities that had to be done to actually comply with the scheme. Under the new scheme, there are these obligations under Table Six and Table Seven that add costs to generating the credits. So when the landholders were, the, the way they did their trades is all the credits were generated for a property, and then they worked out what the total fund deposit was, which is the amount that is required to do the administrative actions to get that environmental improvement. And then the number of credits, oh, sorry, the total fund deposit was just divided by the number of credits generated, and that was the price that they traded the credits at for their, their processes under the RMS Pacific Railway upgrade. That price, as I said, didn't take into account the costs that, we acquired a cost of around $200,000 to do the assessment of our place. That cost was borne by RMS, so it never actually got reflected on the cost of doing the credit production. The opportunity costs, so the, the loss of income, so we could have been grazing or timber harvesting off our property, it had been timber harvesting for the previous 70 years, that, that loss of income from that is not taken into account. So all they were looking at was how much it costs to actually do that, that transaction of producing the, the outcome that was signed off.
All right, we might need to just kind of move on. Mrs. Davies, you have your hand up, and I'll...
I just wanted to make a really quick comment.
Sure, of course.
A lot of what's happening to it now with, under the BCTs, they send out to all landholders to tender, to sell their credits. It's like you're blind, you've got no idea.
It's just a fixed, there's either the tenders or the fixed price offers, where you go, I've got credits, and they go, we'll give you that much. So that's it, there's no, and that's with the BCT, so there's no...
And so the BCT is the buyer, then?
Yeah. Yeah, so that's them trying to cover their obligations with the fund, but they're just offering a surprise. There's no, I suppose, the whole thing about this scheme is, for it to be successful, it needs to be a free market scheme. So, there needs to be a relationship between buyers and sellers, and at the moment, there's a, seems to be a block between a relationship between buyers and sellers, which is the BCT and the fund. So instead of, you know, a buyer having a credit obligation and going and finding a seller who's, has, holds those credits, or multiple buyers and multiple sellers creating competition, you've just got a one-stop shop where you're just tipping the money, and then it's, all of a sudden, it's on the BCT to meet multiple obligations statewide.
Which also then means that the government, as administrator of the BCT, is taking on the obligation of that cost, it's socialising the cost of development on the environment.
Interesting, okay, we could explore this, but I'm conscious of time. Ms. Sharp, I'll go to you now.
Thank you, and thank you everyone for coming in. Really very important to hear your perspectives in relation to how it's actually operating on the ground and the environmental impact we may or may not be seeing. I think this is to Ms. Davies, in goes to, again, your, in your submission, you've sort of touched on this already, is the issue of the way that the market operates? And the, I want, you can just talk about the, your point about unregulated entry of vegetation brokers? And just, and explain to the committee what, who they are and what their role is and what impact they're having on the scheme?
Well, basically, pre-2016, you had the OEH credit register, which displayed who had credits and who wanted credits. So there was an easy way for people to be in contact. Because the waters have been muddied, all of a sudden, there's a role, there's a, there's a space there for people who know people to suddenly inject themselves into a transaction and become a broker. If we had a transparent system with a, with a register administered by, for instance, the BCT, there would be, that relationship would be simple and easy, but as it stands, it's so muddy that all of a sudden, you've got this new industry created of people who know people, and you've just got...
Money.
Brokers now, and another sort of, another margin put on the sale of credits, which isn't going to the actual owner of the credits, it's going to another entity.
Yeah, so, I mean, the issue, I mean, the transparency of the credits is obviously the key change that seems to have happened from what used to happen. What has been the response of the department? I mean, this is clearly not a, a new issue or something that people are unaware of. I mean, is the designer system deliberately so that there isn't a transparency of the credits because they think that they're operating through this tender system, and they want that to be, you know, well, you know, however the market decides that for a period of time? Or is that the reason why it's there? What's their response to the sort of lack of transparency?
Well, there, so, there's been a thing of, what was it, the strengthening in the biodiversity offset scheme, which was a change to the way credits have been priced. So, you know, we've, at the moment, we've got the biodiversity offset payment calculator, which is publicly accessible, so everyone can have a look at that, and that tells everyone what the price ceiling is. Now, I know that when they created it, it wasn't meant to be a ceiling, but in not creating a ceiling, they created a ceiling. So, now, what they're going to do to change that is they're going to have what's called an econometric scale for the highly traded ecosystem types, which is River Flat Uclip Forest and Cumberland Plain Woodland, and everything else is going to be priced in a different manner, taking in many other factors, including land value and so on. The other thing that they're going to do to make that more transparent and more easy for everyone is to hide that price from everyone but the credit buyers. So as sellers, we won't actually know what the biodiversity conservation fund is charging buyers.
Until 90 days later.
Sorry?
Until 90 days later.
Until 90 days later. So, yeah, in terms of transparency, it doesn't seem like they're moving towards more transparency.
No, I didn't, I didn't think so, but I just was interested in the...
There's also no real explanation as to why they're hiding that price, but what, there's no real reason for doing that. There's, like, what does it achieve? There's no benefit to hiding the price.
Mrs. Davies, you also wanted to, sorry...
I just wanted to comment too on that consultation paper, because it's been building up for some time, that the whole scheme seems to have got a bit skewed. But just out of interest, I did a word count on that consultation paper, which was April last year, and the word developer in that consultation paper that was sent out was mentioned 72 times, landholder zero times, and BSA site owner once. So the whole paper was sort of focused on looking through the lens of developing, developers, it seemed to me, and that's why I did the word count, just out of interest. I'm just making that comment, because I think...
No, it's a very, it's a very, quite a telling point.
Yeah.
Thanks for that. I wanted to ask, and this is a brilliant question, I mean, there's a lot of complexity in this game, and, you know, rightly in some ways, because biodiversity is complicated and the assessment is there, and I'm just interested in the kind of... And I'm just interested in the kind of... From your point of view, I mean, how much does it cost for you to get an assessment done?
Well, how long's it...
And how people are able to do that for you? I mean, I think part of what I've learned through this inquiry is that because it's so complicated, there are actually a very limited number of people who are actually able to do that work. So for, you know, my interest in this is that I want landholders to be able to get this source of income and be, you know, incentivized and supported to keep biodiversity on their properties. But I'm just concerned at the cost and complexity of that and how that actually is leading to a lot of these kind of insider trading type problems.
The Register of Accredited Assessors identifies the number of people who are able to apply the biodiversity assessment method. I think it's about 300 odd members, I'd need to look at it. But that includes people who are both within consultancies and within government and in local government. Anybody that's able to interrogate the complexity of the scheme basically has to be accredited assessor. As I mentioned before, our assessment, we paid a consultancy about $60,000 for our assessment, but that was excluding the contributions that I made in doing things like additional vegetation survey to assist them, so doing the preliminary work and also to administering camera work. So we did two years' worth of camera work on our property and the only reason we stopped was because it burnt. The cost of doing our assessment was basically about $200,000.
And that's an upfront cost?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, so if you go to a landholder and say you're interested in it, that's an upfront cost. And then you've got all the other complications with capital gains and all of that. And it scares people off, to be quite honest.
I did suggest to a member of the BCT board at one point that maybe the BCT could offer that up as a... That the BCT could finance that for assessments and then at the point of credit sale, take that money back.
Yes, I mean, I'm very interested in that. I mean, it just seems to me that, you know, local landowners and, you know, particularly family-owned farming operations, very keen to do it, but that's a big upfront cost. And if you could, you know, if people are assessing, do we do that or do we do private native forestry, the barriers to entry are much, much lower on that end. No, thank you for that, that's very helpful. I also just quickly, I hope this is okay?
Yeah, that's okay. I've just, we've... Yeah, keep going Penny, yep.
Yep, just a couple of quick questions. And again, it's sort of this role. I'm very concerned about the small number of people that seem to have been able to exploit the scheme massively. And in your submission, you talk about the kind of minority of profit takers. I'm just wondering if you could give us sort of a kind of... Without identifying where they are, you can do that if you want to, but just sort of, what is the process that the people that are the fly-by-nighters in this? How are they operating? How are they operating within this scheme and what's the impact of that?
Do you want to talk about it?
Well, I mean, the best way of talking about that is to talk about the other side of the coin, which is private landholders, multi-generational landholders who are able to offset a portion of their land, use the money generated from the offsetting of that land to invest in the rest of the property that they own, which benefits not only that landowner, it benefits future generations of landowners on that property. It also benefits the local community because you've got an increase of money feeding into the local community. Me personally, I started a bush regeneration company off the back of private landholder conservation, which I wouldn't have been able to do without it. The fly-by-nighters, you buy a block of land, you offset the entire block of land, you take your money, you employ a bush regeneration company, and you go somewhere else. You're not actively involved in the future management of that land, you're gone, so...
And the issue then clearly is who's monitoring the improvements there? Can you take us through what happens? You know, who... How is that working? I mean, your submission suggests that basically government agencies are trying to enforce the agreements, but they've kind of done and dusted... Like, how, what is the monitoring regime that people, you know, have worked with?
Does annual management inspection by the BCT, an ecologist comes out and checks the management of the scheme, but we're aware of, you know, large areas of land and the Sydney Basin's not land... We're supposed to be talking about the entire state here, but this is our experience. Around us have been bought by people. And the part A, the management fund has been worked down. So the part B, that's gone into the pockets of the landowners, has been worked up. There isn't enough money left in the management to actually properly regenerate or clear weeds. But those people have moved on elsewhere.
And now have put those properties on the market for someone else to buy and take on that obligation.
Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah. How are you going Penny in terms of...
Yes, that's fine.
Might just go to, just, I understand Mr Scott Barrett from the government also just has a couple of questions.
To start with, just a clarification question. You refer a lot in your submission as to the multi-generational farmers. At one point there, Mr Davies, you actually corrected yourself because you left out multi-generational farmers. Why is that so important and why... Is that almost discriminating against new landowners?
No, absolutely not. No. No, we're not...
I was just wondering why it's so important you get that...
Well, because I'm a multi-generational landowner and I've worked with a number of multi-generational landowners. And if you're... When you're talking about conservation, we're talking about a conservation stewardship agreement. So when you biobank a block of land, you've conserved it. But when you biobank a block of land with an invested landowner, in this instance, a multi-generational landowner, you've also got the steward coming with it. So you don't just have a conservation, you've got a conservation stewardship. So why we're talking about multi-generational landowners is because multi-generational landowners have a vested interest in that block. And I'm not saying that new landowners won't or don't. I'm just saying that in this instance, multi-generational landowners have a demonstrated vested interest in the long-term viability of a whole farm system. And using offsetting and conservation agreements to benefit the whole farm system, not just their back pocket and a small patch of conservation.
If I can add to that too, the additional factor to take into account here is that these are in perpetuity agreements. So the multi-generational landholder is not just those past, but those future.
Your organisation, I think, represents about 12 biobank owners? Are they scattered right across the state or are they mainly in this sort of Sydney Basin or...?
We've got them...
About half and half.
About half and... A number of them in the Sydney Basin and some up around the North West.
My understanding is a total of about 230 across the state? Is that right?
Biobank owners or...
No idea.
Conservation agreements?
Sorry?
Sorry, they're 230 odd stewardship agreements.
Landowners that have biodiversity stewardship arrangements.
Possibly, yep.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I agree, Sharp, in that we need that to be high. Now, reading your submission, you actually have a lot of history in the biodiversity ecology and are quite well versed in university studies, publishing documents. And even in your submission, it comes through that this is not an easy process, it's quite a difficult thing to get involved in. I'm thinking of people that have... Do not have your background and experience.
No.
Is that complexity and difficulty prohibitive to get that 230 up to the higher number?
Yes.
Yep. Definitely.
Yes.
Other ways that we can simplify it for the landholder? You know, there's three assessors, that's more than... There's more assessors than landholders.
Yes.
Yes.
That is correct.
It's an industry.
Other ways from a landholder point of view that would make this simpler?
Yeah, subsidize the cost of assessment.
That would be the easiest way to simplify the system because, as we mentioned before, the complexity of biodiversity is something that is... Has to be addressed in the system. If you simplify the assessment process, you're actually going to detriment the environment. You'll potentially say, this species is not as valuable as that one, so therefore we can preserve this one and lose that one. But then why are we in a position to make that judgment? So the complexity of the system has to remain, but the way in which the complexity of entering and participating is what needs to be addressed.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I just make a comment too? I think we've come up against a big sort of a block between us and the... Well, I call them bureaucrats that administer the scheme. We've got tremendous ecologists and we've got the BCT. There's us in the middle there and we haven't really been that well included in it all, except we've been told these are the changes that are being made to the scheme. We've suggested in our submission that someone like us be actually on the board, someone who has actual... An actual stewardship site, a biobank site that's actually got their feet on the ground. We've never had anyone come out and look at our biobank at all. They've no idea about it. The other point too that I would... Which is indicative of the lack of understanding, I think, of the people administering it, is that at the last session, the dykes, wasn't it? And Barry Buffias, that they had suddenly totally devalued a particular set of credits. If you go back a step, these were registered biobank agreements. Capital gains tax is assessed on the value of what they were at the time it was registered. You suddenly devalue that. These people have already been assessed at capital gain on that original valuation. If you're going to suddenly say, well, they're not worth... They're only worth less than 100% of... 99% of deduct that much of them, then they've got a major tax issue there. But that's just done, just done, without any kind of consultation or thought about the impact on the landholders.
Yeah, thank you. I think Mr Mark Pearson, Deputy Chair, has one question.
Thank you very much. Just, I'm finding this extremely complex.
It is.
Excuse me if it's a bit of an ignorant question. So after there's been an assessment done and the credits have been allocated for an area of land that you have cultivated or preserved, does the value, credit value of that land increase the longer that that land is in perpetuity for the biodiversity is more complex, the flora and fauna, the flora is older?
No, because that is what the credits...
That is what the credits are.
No, no, it stays as the agreement.
At the beginning.
So the point of a conservation agreement is to increase biodiversity. So that's the actual value that you're...
So it's the projected value?
Correct.
Yeah.
I just would just... In the last minute I have, Mr Steen Baker. You note in your submission, you're quite adamant that ecologists should be able to participate in the scheme. Did you just want to address that for the committee, noting that you have also addressed that in your submission?
So essentially, for the same reason as you or members of the Parliament are trained lawyers and are participating in the development of laws, why should an ecologist that ideally would understand how to administer the environment for the outcomes that are being sought through this process, why should they be penalized or excluded?
Can I jump in there because you do have that in your submission? But for example, I think the issue is, isn't it, if an ecologist goes on to a particular area, identifies, for example, that certain threatened species are there, isn't there the potential for them to own a site with particular threatened species? And isn't there potential for some ecologists to name too many species, for example, at the site that's going to be cleared? How is that...
The impact... The species impact is determined in the same process as the species acquisition, shall we call it. The ban process applies to both the development and the clearing site, the development and the stewardship site. The ecologist's work is reviewed by someone else. So the ecologist can say, there are these species here, but then there's someone else who has to actually verify that species is there.
Is that from a different company or...?
It's... No, it's from one of the conditioning authorities. So it'll be either a local government approval authority or a major project approval authority. The actual saying that the species are there to be impacted is administered or is reviewed by those people. A developer can say, we accept that this species is here even though we didn't find it, which then makes an obligation to find an offset to provide those credits. So there are developments around where they'll say, oh, we didn't find koalas, but we assume they're going to be here, so we make an assumed presence contribution or, you know, consideration for the impact. The opportunities that an ecologist has to find species in a stewardship site is through their training, it's through their expertise. But that finding of the species on the site, still then, when the BCT is doing the approval of the credits, is that BCT staff are seeing those species or seeing evidence of those species on the site. So the ecologist can say, I've seen them there, and I have, I've seen on our property up north, we're almost closing on 50 species of threatened species.
Yeah, just quickly, just sorry because we're at time.
So the capacity to say that there's this species here which just happens to have been impacted over here, it can happen and there's no reason it shouldn't. But there's these people on this site or the development on this site has its impact approved and the stewardship has its production approved by people that are outside that process.
Okay. All right, thank you. Sorry to rush you at the end, but I did want you to get that on the record for us. So thank you very much for appearing. I don't believe you've taken any questions on notice, but committee members may have some additional questions for you and the secretary will be in touch if so. Thank you.
I just hope that the recommendations I provided are observed.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll now call our next witnesses. Thanks so much. There was a lot... Okay, good morning, Mr Forrest. And now welcome you as our next witness. If you could please state, we'll swear, swear you in. So if you could please state your name and position, title and swear either an oath or an affirmation.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Tom Forrest. I'm the Chief Executive of the Urban Task Force Australia. I'll take the affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Now, do you have a short opening statement to, to give?
I do.
Thank you, go ahead.
I welcome the opportunity to contribute to the committee and, and I thank you for inviting me to your deliberations on the effectiveness of the New South Wales Biodiversity Offset Scheme. By way of background, there's a, there is currently, and I'm sure you know, there's currently a chronic shortage of housing stock across very much of New South Wales and particularly in regional New South Wales, something that's less spoken about than the shortages in the, in the city. Since the arrival of COVID-19, population growth in many regional communities has accelerated. The subsequent lack of housing supply in regional New South Wales has inflated prices and squeezed many locals out of the rental market, often those that can least afford to be squeezed out of the rental market in those regional locations. That's not a good, that's not a good outcome for anyone. Urban Task Force members fear that the biodiversity offset scheme, as it currently, as it currently is, impedes investment and the delivery of new homes. In our view, the cost of the biodiversity conservation scheme should not be borne entirely by the new home buyer through the living of developers who, and we'll go into if you wish, why it is that a levy placed on a developer ends up affecting the new home buyer. Those privileged folk who live in, in the inner city, in the eastern suburbs of Sydney, in the North Shore, for example, they live in communities that have benefited from historic wholesale land clearance. New home buyers on the fringe of Sydney, for example, should not be required to bear the full cost of repairing the environmental damage caused by that land clearance. And yet, as the system currently sits, they are. In many cases, particularly in regional locations, the cost of biodiversity offsets is simply prohibitive for land development. Any biodiversity offsets should be clearly established and stated at the point of rezoning. The biodiversity offset scheme often applies and seeks to identify matters of biodiversity protection well after the rezoning, therefore a hidden cost for those that have invested in that property and an unknown cost which is almost impossible to, to put a premium upon. The costs, the costs associated with, with those offsets should be fixed at the point of rezoning. It is the constant risk of, there's a constant risk of review and change which ultimately puts, pushes up the risk and therefore the price that, that associated with that regulatory regime. Opportunities for, from the broader tax base should also be explored and that goes to the point of equity that I mentioned earlier. Investment in infrastructure is investment in our future, so too is an investment in biodiversity. It's the responsibility of us all, not just the new home purchaser or the developer. However, the current biodiversity offset scheme, by being so specific, so onerous and indeed expensive, is not an attractive option for many investors. It actually puts off, it puts off investment in new housing in regional communities and on urban fringe communities because of the risks associated with it and because of the associated costs. Our experience in attempting to access the scheme is that, that the species list is too long and importantly, very specific for, and in so, in so doing, it stops transactions effectively being completed. That is to say, the specificity of the particular species that's being listed on a particular, in a particular site can't be found readily on another site and therefore undermining the credibility and the viability of the biodiversity offsets scheme and the associated credit scheme. That, that effectively is market failure. Urban Task Force represents the DP, creates a gradation of classes of endangered species. So you don't have to go to that specificity, but you have a gradation of classes of species and then that, that, those classes be priced accordingly. Species with a lower biodiversity value would be identified, classed together and priced accordingly. Species with a higher biodiversity value would, would also be grouped together. I know, I know that other submissions, including that from local government, New South Wales prefer a like-for-like species credit scheme, but it's, that, that's the very problem that I was creating that has caused the market failure that we currently see. Further, we submit that the scheme should include an opportunity for the allocation of credits to landholders for onsite works that improves or adds to the biodiversity outcome. Urban Task Force recommends that the scheme, that the scheme only apply to developments of scale and impact with, with a threshold introduced for that to be applicable. Developments below the threshold, instead of requiring the identification offsetting of species, should instead be required to pay a fee to contribute to the management and the improvement of national parks or the broad pool of biodiversity. I note that local government, New South Wales, support that recommendation also. There's a range of other things that we've raised in our submission, but for now, I welcome the opportunity to take questions.
Thank you very much, Mr Forrest. And I think you came in earlier and are aware that we have some of our members tuning in via Webex today as well. So I'll just kick off with a couple to begin with. I just wanted you to expand, I think you mentioned it in your opening statement as well, but perhaps just being a little bit more specific where you say that Urban Task Force members have reported buying and owning land that's been cleared and rezoned for urban development and then during, and you say here, the usually long and drawn out development approval process, a species emerges on the site that requires offsetting. Could you explain, just give the detail of what that species is and is there one or more examples of that you'd care to give for the committee?
Look, I can't give you the examples of what the species is. What I was telling you, what I was trying to explain, Chair Ferman, is that a number of our members have, have explained to me as the, as the industry representative that this is a common occurrence. They, and I could only go by way of, by way of example, but it could be in relation to a particular species of spotted gum, for example, or, or, or.
Xylithi.
Exactly. But the difficulty is, the difficulty is that at the time that they purchased it might not have been, and often we're talking large land parcels, they might not have been, they might not have been initially identified or understood to have been. And that's often the case with, with insects, with grasses, with the, those species, which unless you're an ecological expert, you're unlikely for it to be immediately apparent until you've had the, had the experts go through the property and do the assessment. What we'd like to see is that sort of biodiversity analysis being done as part of the, part and parcel of the rezoning process. So that before developers go in and buy, they already have a list of biodiversity species that they know that they're going to have to be dealing with going forward. The idea that you buy and then you hope is, it adds to the risk. And there's one thing that the development community don't like, it's, it's the risk. And then if it is, if it is the case that a particular species of spotted gum is, has been identified through the process of the biodiversity audit that takes place, we feel that, that at the moment, the requirement to precisely identify exactly that particular species of spotted gum, not something that's in the broad, the broad biological spectrum of that species, but something that's very specific. When often they are locationally specific, it becomes difficult to be able to actually offset that and therefore, therefore effectively sterilizes the land. If you're unable to be able to buy and pay for the protection of a like species elsewhere, effectively your land becomes sterilized. We think it's too specific and, and, and in the context of also the competing imperative, and no doubt this is something that you're dealing with as our, our members dealing with, the competition, if you like, between the sprawling, the sprawl of our suburbs, the sprawl of our cities, the growth of our regional communities and the need to preserve and protect biodiversity species. We'd like to see something a little bit more flexible that hopefully does, enables the, the housing growth to develop as well as protecting those, those species in a more flexible way.
Okay, thank you. So, so with the, you mentioned that a particular species, you spotted gum as an example, but say for, is, is found somewhere and it's very difficult to get like-for-like elsewhere. But that's the whole, whole point really of the scheme, isn't it? That, that we, we're very critical of it. A lot of development, of course, isn't avoided or minimized in terms of biodiversity impacts. A lot of it's offset. But that's the definition of a threatened species really. When a species is found somewhere and they're not found in too many other places and there's not many of them, that's the definition of a threatened species. So are you suggesting, Mr Forrest, that the, the framework should be weakened to enable the easier clearing of threatened species?
Certainly not clear, no. What, I guess weakened would be one way of putting it. Another way of putting it would be, I believe that the, and our members say that the, that the list is too specific and, and gets into the minutia to such an extent that it undermines the integrity of the whole system. Because if you effectively can't buy or identify an offset, effectively you're then sterilizing. And ultimately compromises have to be made. Do we just rule out development in that area? In which case, if that's the case, then let's not rezone it. The whole point is that the major signal to a property developer that this area is okay and ready to be developed for a particular purpose is the signing off by the government of a rezoning. We're saying, if you are so concerned about a threatened species on that land and you don't, honestly don't believe that it is able to be offset through the protection of another spear, of another case of that species in another location, don't give the key market signal, which is a rezoning of that property, which immediately lifts the price of that property. Don't do that. Wait until you've worked out those things and then when you've worked out those things, then rezone the land with a list of what has to be protected. And then with full knowledge, the developer can go in there and choose, yes, I think I can manage that risk or no, that risk is too great, I won't get involved. That's, that's the broader point that I'm trying to make.
So your recommendation therefore would be for the, the state government or local government to, to pay for the assessment essentially by ecologists, the ecological assessment of land, for example, South West Sydney Growth Centre, but, but pay for that before, before rezoning? That's essentially what you're saying. So when you come in, when developers come in, they know what they're dealing with.
There are two types of resignings. There's developer initiated or applicant or proponent initiated rezoning processes where that was the case, the applicant would be paying for that assessment to be taken place. And that's regularly the case already where, where a developer is the applicant for the rezoning, the, the, and to be, to be completely frank, a developer who was applying for a rezoning, who hadn't done a thorough ecological assessment, probably isn't really serious about the process of rezoning. But where, where the government, as a government identifies an area for potential rezoning, be that local government or state government, then yes, they should be leading the process of doing that biodiversity assessment. And that can be funded, as far as I'm concerned, through consolidated revenue reflecting the benefit that the broader community gets through the protection of the species.
I just wanted to say, Ms Sharp, I'll just, do you have, oh, Ms Jackson, yes, sorry.
Thanks, thanks Chair. I wondered if you could be, you know, just a little bit more specific about how your views on the current, the operation of the current scheme are impacting house prices in regional areas. I mean, you sort of said in your submission and in your opening comment that you were happy to talk about the way that the current scheme and the costs associated with it were ultimately being borne by purchases or prospective purchases in, in regional New South Wales. And I wondered if you could give us some, as closer to specifics about how that worked.
Yeah, look, any, I mean, this, this goes to the broader question of all, all costs that are placed upon developers. Ultimately, the, the way, the, the way any feasibility analysis works is a developer goes essentially, identifies a site, identifies the potential yield, identifies the cost of construction, identifies the land purchase price, identifies the cost of, the cost of securing the capital, that is the interest rates, and then it places a further premium on risk and ultimately develop a profit at the end, at the end of the process. If you can't demonstrate to a bank that you're going to make a profit that covers the risk that is commensurate with that, with that site, then the bank won't lend you money and you just don't get development. So, so either you can demonstrate that the market will pay for the increased price associated with any impost from government, any regulatory impost, and biodiversity is one of those, one of those imposts. If you, and the more that there's an opportunity for surprise to be brought into the equation, the more the bank will require that the margin at the end has to be bigger because it's got to cover the potential for that surprise to be realized. So, so the trick is creating, or the trick, the challenge is to create a regulatory system that minimizes the, the risk, which is why I'm saying the more that we know upfront, the, the less we have to demonstrate to the bank that we're factored in the possibility that this might be discovered down the process. Now, you've got to demonstrate to the bank that when, when we go to sell the product, that they, that you'd be able to pass that on to the consumer through higher prices. Either the bank will say, no, the market's not there for that type of product in Wagga Wagga or in Tamworth or in southwestern Sydney around Wilton or, or northwestern Sydney in those growth areas. Either it is or it isn't. Right now, the shortage in housing supply effectively pushes up the price for all of the consumers. So right now, lots of things can be levied on developers and, and the, the market is there to be able to, to be able to absorb that. What we fear is we're setting ourselves up for a very difficult situation in the relatively near future if and when interest rates go up. And suddenly banks are starting to look to foreclose on people's loans because the market that was previously there is suddenly not. Suddenly then, the imposts that are placed through, through any type of regulation and therefore passed on to the consumer are unable to be afforded and we further exacerbate what is already there and that's a housing supply shortage. That's, I, I know that that's a little bit abstract, but it's a real thing that's happening right now, right across regional New South Wales. There's, ironically, it's the shortage of, there's lots of companies wanting to move to regional New South Wales and they get told by the mayors, sorry, we can't because there's nowhere for you to bring the new workers to live. In fact, there's a whole bunch of people in what used to be rental accommodation, being forced out of the rental accommodation because properties that never used to be viable for sale are now being snapped up by people who are looking to move into those, those communities. Ultimately, it's the poorest people who suffer from that. Often sadly, people from First Nations backgrounds who have been living in sometimes subsidized rental accommodation, if the owner chooses to, to sell it because it's a sudden influx in demand from, from tree changers, they are the ones that suffer as a result of that. And that's, I guess, the property development industry is often seen as people who rapaciously just wanted to develop. Well, to put another face on that, we rapaciously want to service the demand for the product that we build, that is new homes. And the population's growing and therefore there is that product that we want to service. What we need to do is ensure that that's done in an affordable way in the medium and longer term, not just in the immediate term where we have those, those raising, those rising price values, which are being supported by low interest rates.
I mean, just to be clear though, as you say, you know, it's clear that there is massive demand in regional New South Wales. So it's not actually the case right now that banks are not offering finance to developers who are looking to build stock in regional New South Wales because in fact, there is so much demand that there would be no concern with that, you know, there would not be able to be purchases at the end for that product.
That is true. That's not a sustainable long-term position. But what I would say is the, and this goes back to the point that Ms Ferman raised, and that is, at the moment, sometimes the specificity of the requirement for biodiversity offsets is so great that it, it simply slows down or even stops the process. So while it might be affordable, and that creates a problem for another day, should interest rates go, go up, but let's put that to one side, as you say. What, what you do get then is a delay or a non-delivery of the housing stock, which exacerbates the very problem of rising prices in the first place. So we've, we've sort of got a dual problem, which in some respects competes against each other.
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, it's easy to say in theory, yes, development is not occurring because they can't find like-for-like offset. But, you know, can you give us specific examples? Is where, you know, where's that happened? Where has that occurred?
I'll have to take the question on notice.
That would be useful. I wanted to ask about the threshold, which was your recommendation for. I mean, what, what kind of threshold might you be looking for between, you know, a small site and a large site and the different systems that you suggest would be applicable in those circumstances?
Could be either a, a, a value threshold in terms of the construction value or it could be a physical, a physical size threshold.
Do you have a preference, Mr Forrest?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a preference. What we, what we'd be keen to do is, is to establish a system where there, at least with some degree of a more flexible system for the smaller development community to be able to go forward. And, and while it's obviously recognized that very large land parcels, there should be an, an application of a, of a system where it is more specific. For the smaller, for the smaller folk, often the identification of one item of biodiversity species on that land can cause mayhem for that, for that one. And, and if there were an opportunity to contribute more broadly to a stock, national parks, through a stocks, through a broad pool of biodiversity protection funding, then that might be an opportunity to be able to progress those smaller land parcels without having to go through the rigors, the strenuous rigors of the current system.
In your recommendation file and in your opening statement, you talked about the potential for, I think, you know, the use of credits as you described them for sort of onsite improvements that developers might be able to make. What, what might some of those onsite improvements look like? What type of things did you have in mind?
The planting, the planting of protected species, the creation of natural habitat for fauna, so both flora and fauna could be, could be protected. We, there is no capacity at the moment. We, there is no capacity at the moment for, for developers themselves to participate in the creation of opportunities for the expansion of, of biodiversity on their, on their sites. It's almost presumed that we'll clear it and then brick it or concrete it. But the reality of the world of development is far more sophisticated than that these days. And the creation of communities and opportunities for protection of threatened species often increases the value of those lands and therefore the salability of those same things.
And just lastly, I just wanted to ask about the, the recommendation that you made that the sort of biodiversity requirements of any development is known at the rezoning stage, is finalised at the rezoning stage. The Chair was asking some questions about this. How would you see that, that working in a way, just in relation to, once land is rezoned, even within a new sort of zoning category, there are a range of different uses that it can be put to, some of which are, you know, perhaps much more intensive and much more impactful, others far less so, you know, even within zoning categories. And so would you view it as in the, you know, there would be a fixed cost in a way associated with any development on that land, consistent obviously with the new zoning? Or would you accept that there would be potentially some flexibility amongst, look, it's, it's zoned for this, but, you know, you can, within that, within the scope of that, there are a range of different uses that it could be applied for and that there would be some, you wouldn't necessarily pay, pay the same if it was used for one use as opposed to another that had a different impact?
I guess the question is, if you're going to be, if there's a threat to the threatened species as a result of the development, it doesn't really matter if the threat is a, a commercial development, a farming development, a mixed-use development, a housing development, a, a rural land package development or a high-density urban development. If it's threatening the species, it's threatening the species. What we need to do is identify, identify those species before the impact. And frankly, if the rezoning is not, I, I would probably contest that most land uses that we're talking about, if it's, if it's rural or environmental land currently and, and it's being adjusted but into another zone that is similarly protective of rural and environmental land, I doubt you'd need to go through the, the process of going through a biodiversity conservation species analysis. But where you're seeking to change the zoning of the land for the purposes of the creation of the expansion of a city, that is either for residential accommodation or alternatively employment land, it's in those circumstances where, where you need to go through the process because they are the types of land uses where you are going to have a, a degree of clearing, a degree of threat to those, those biodiversity species. And as a result, there's going to be a need. So I don't know, you don't want to make it too complicated where you've got a sort of a, a table of a thousand if thens. But, but I would take the point that perhaps if, if it wasn't going to have any practical impact, then you wouldn't need to go through that process and that'd be sensible.
Yeah, I mean, it's just that, you know, often it's not black and white, you know, species, you know, there is an area of land, it is perhaps changing even from a kind of rural or environmental use into a, you know, some kind of residential or development use. It's not always black and white. Species will be threatened, you know, definitely by any development or not. Often there are sort of grades of these things, you know. If you sort of clear the whole thing and put up, you know, 20 stories, then sure, it's going to be pretty impactful if you're doing, you know, a much lighter touch, you know, like low-density, you know, residential development, which maintains a lot of green space. That's quite different. I mean, they wouldn't necessarily be caught in the same residential zonings, but you can see the point that I'm making that, you know, the zonings themselves have quite a lot of scope for different use.
They, they do, although the resignings can, the, the zoning table is quite specific. From, from R1 through to R2 through to R3, B1, they, they, you're not going to, there's not, not going to be competition within the same zoning between a 20-storey building
That's true.
And, and, and I would just put on record, and you'd be surprised if I didn't, note that you can get a lot more houses in a 20-storey building and therefore be able to protect a lot more of the environment than you would if you were to spread that out over a massive area and had to clear the entire subdivision. But thank you for that opportunity.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point as well though. I mean, there's just, there are quite, a, a range of different ways
Yes.
that an impact in a, in a, you know, in a parcel of land can be felt.
Yes.
And the, the idea of fixing, fixing the costs at the rezoning stage, I'm just wondering whether that provides enough flexibility to actually make a decision about, this is the, this is the specific development that is proposed for this site. But anyway, I think, I think you've answered how, how you would see that working.
You raised a very good point and I, I might just quickly respond and that would be, thinking as I go, the, ultimately, if a developer, if, the, the, the key is to have the biodiversity species identified and the cost associated with the protection of that biodiversity species identified. If you can protect it with the development that you propose, you shouldn't have to. You shouldn't have to pay for the cost of the protection of that or the replacement of that elsewhere. But, and then that might influence the type of development that proceeds. But the key is, from our perspective, is knowing upfront what it is that you're likely to be up for and not buying and hoping.
Yes.
Or indeed in some cases, and I certainly wouldn't want to think that this, any of our members would do this, but in some cases, potentially buying and quietly clearing and hoping that nobody notices. That's the thing that we want to avoid the most.
Yeah. Okay.
This may have questions.
Yeah, I'll just see. Mr Barrett, do you have any questions for the witness?
If I can, Chair, just come back to the issue of the, you mentioned it's particularly pronounced, the challenges around the offset programme are particularly pronounced in rural and regional areas. Is there, and I'm just going to make some numbers up, but you know, proportional difference there where the offset costs are going to be a lot higher proportionately on a $200,000 block on the edge of COBIA than they would be on a $1.2 million block on the edge of Penrith. Is that causing problems? And if so, can you elaborate maybe with some actual real numbers, not made up?
Yeah. I completely take the point and I agree with you that obviously if you have a fixed cost across all the, the protection of all biodiversity species, it's going to impact on lower-cost land than, more greatly than it's going to impact upon higher-cost land as a proportion of the total cost. That said, the protection of species is the protection of species. And, and if your, if your object is to protect the particular species, it doesn't really matter if it's on low-cost land or high-cost land. It probably is more affordable as a proportion of the total cost. But on the other hand, in the, the cities, we're facing the situation where every marginal increase is making it more and more difficult for us to, to create both an economically and environmentally sustainable growth of those cities going forward. And that's a, that's a real challenge as we, as we go forward. So I think you raise a very good point, but am I able to provide specifics in relation to that? No, not at this stage. I can't. So I'm afraid, I, I can't add further to my answer than that.
I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Mr Mallard.
Yes, good morning and thank you for your submission, Mr Forrest. And, but we're sort of straddling between environmentalists are very unhappy with the sphere and developers are happy. So it seems to me that we've got a bit of a, bit of a balancing act to do. I wanted to ask, following on from the criticism from earlier witnesses, I don't know if you saw them, is your, are your members critical of lack of transparency in the, in the scheme? Like a certainty about the transactions?
Yes.
And if so, would you like to outline some suggestions and mentions to make it more transparent? Because I was going to ask witnesses that same question that we could look at.
Yeah, look, the, the, the current calculator mechanism is, is a bit of a black box and it doesn't have a degree of transparency that makes, and if I could compare it with another black box, but it's not quite as black as this one, and that's the basics. But the way you calculate basics is there's a thing called a sandbox tool. And you have basic specialists, two specialist analysts, and you plug in all your inputs into the construction of a building and it plugs out a basics number. And you put in what type of glass you use and how much timber you're using and how much structural steel you're using, et cetera, et cetera. How much solar? And you have a black box tool, you have a sandbox tool and it gives you a number. And any basics analyst is unable to give you that, that, that number. We find, we need to have something similar at least in this situ, in, in, in this, a mechanism similar to that basic sandbox tool. If that, if something similar could be applied in this area. And, and to that end, we've been, we've tried to be constructive, Mr Mallard. We've tried, Urban Task Force recognised that this is a vexed issue, but it's not going to go away. We, the question of biodiversity and protection of species is not going to go away. But nor is the demand for increased housing supply and, and pressure on the urban fringes in the regions as well as the urban fringes of Sydney. So we're sort of, and, and the recommendations that we've made and the idea that you might pull groups of different species together, they have to be similar enough that you are still protecting a decent lump of species. But collectively, it would only be if it was highly threatened species and therefore a very high conservation value that you, that you would be, and then it would create, there would be a higher value attributed to that. If all of the species in that very high value have a large pool of funding going to it, there's a greater chance that the biodiversity conservation trust would be in a position to be able to purchase up land parcels which, which protect that very same species. At the moment, you're not getting the, you're not getting effectively the funds created through the transfer of those credits because they're so specific that you're unable to identify something similar and so nothing happens. And where nothing happens, that's the market failure that I'm, that I'm talking about. So we've tried to be constructive. It is a black box at the moment and we do recommend that more transparency or any work that can be done to create a system with greater transparency would be beneficial for both the conservation community and those representing them as well as the, the, the property development community. We'd be supportive of that.
We had some criticism of, of, of agitation brokers, I think was the term was used. I like the term middlemen, but you know, people negotiate or navigate this from bacteria on behalf of property owners and then the, you know, the purchaser and the offset. Do you have experience around that area?
Yeah.
Mood area?
I, I am concerned about the, the question of poacher gamekeeper or of anyone. There should be a clear system where there is a conflict of interest able to be expressed and, and identified publicly. In fact, there should be a prohibition on anyone that's doing biodiversity ecological identification of land and particular species for protection and also them owning parcels of land that might be able to be sold. That should just not be allowed. It wouldn't be allowed in, in the case of a property developer. You'd have to clearly identify those pieces and pretty well everywhere else in, 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 in administration of, of, of law in New South Wales. You, you try to separate those that are doing the assessments from those that might benefit from the assessment that's being done. And, and you do that by having them publicly note that these are the things that I have a, that I have, that the properties that I hold and these are the species that I'm looking to place onto the credit register. And therefore, if, if you're going to be going and doing an investigation of anywhere that might have any of those species, you rule yourself out. It seems to me to be pretty, pretty sensible and would protect this question of conflict of interest from arising.
My last question, just to flesh out the issue, is it like a scheme, the current iteration of it's 40 years old. Your experience of the scheme, going back to the original scheme to this scheme? I mean, it seems to be constantly evolving and requiring refinement, market mechanism. Would that be your view that it's improving as we go forward?
I think that the knowledge of everyone of the system and the knowledge of what you can do and what you can't do and what is necessary for, for protection and where you might be able to identify species that might offset, that I think that that has all improved. I guess the frustration is always the, the, the placement of additional items onto the register, as is, as is the way in an, in an environment, in a situation where, where, where species are increasingly becoming threatened, of course, they go onto the list. That's life, I guess, but it's a frustration for development and it's a frustration for developers and ultimately it's, it's, it's an additional cost for the consumers. Because as I mentioned earlier, at the end of the day, the, the developer won't develop if it becomes unfinancial to do so. So that's the, that's just the reality that we face. It's, it's, it's an area that we understand as a development community is not going away. We would like to look to systems that make it more predictable and, and therefore more manageable. And that was, goes back to the very first question that the Chair and I discussed at the beginning of the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I just will check with both Ms Penny Sharp and Ms Catherine Cusack just to see whether there are any questions. Oh, Catherine's not on there. Penny's wrong.
Ask most questions. So that has been covered. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay. I think that may be the end of our questions then for you, Mr Forrest. So thank you very much for appearing today and for your, for your submission. And it is good to, to get the perspective of you and your members. I don't believe you've taken anything on notice. You have taken something on notice. The Secretariat will be in touch with you about that and you may get some more questions from us committee members as well. So thank you so much
Thank you.
for appearing. We will now break for lunch and we'll be back at 1.30. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed.
Thanks.
We're right to go. Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome to our next and final session for today's hearing. And I now welcome our next witnesses. We'll start with swearing in those of you who need to be sworn in. So I'll start with you, Ms Morgan, if you could please state your name and position title and swear either or neither in affirmation.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Julie Morgan. I'm the Executive Director of Environment and Sustainability at Transport for New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Ms Emery.
Hello, I'm Ingrid Emery, Executive Director of Project Interfaces and Programme Management at Water Infrastructure, New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr Gainesford and Ms Dumazell, you've both been previously sworn in, so we don't have to go to you. And finally, Dr Atticus Fleming, I understand you are tuning in remotely. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Yes, if we can go to you now to do the same, thanks.
I don't have it in front of me, so I'm going to try and remember. I solemnly, completely and totally affirm that the evidence I'm about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And your name and position title as well.
Mr Atticus Fleming.
Yes, that's what I thought. Thank you very much, Mr Fleming. For some reason, you always get Dr Fleming in all of these hearings, and you correct us every time. Okay, thank you very much. Now, I understand, Ms Morgan, that you have the opening statement for your group, if you could proceed, please.
Thank you. I'm pleased to appear as a witness before the inquiry in my role as Executive Director of Environment and Sustainability within the Safety, Environment and Regulation Division of Transport. As the committee may be aware, Transport for New South Wales is a major participant in the biodiversity offset scheme. But our first priority in relation to environmental impacts is not to offset our impact, but to avoid impacts on biodiversity and to mitigate any impacts to the greatest extent practicable. This is a core part of our assessment processes at all stages of development and carries into the delivery of infrastructure. We're very conscious of the environmental impacts of our projects and endeavour to minimise those impacts at all stages. Where impacts cannot be avoided or mitigated, we work to secure any offsets as early as possible, particularly when we know that competition for biodiversity credits will be high and to avoid the long compliance tails that characterise previous schemes. We actively assist in developing the credit market by supporting local landholders to generate credits and by using our own land to create credits. Transport has assisted private landholders to generate 16,400 credits across 2,022 hectares of land, and we've generated more than 17,300 credits across 1,400 hectares of transport-owned land. We support a robust and transparent credit market by publicly advertising for credits through expression of interest processes and by taking a consistent approach to offers for credits and pricing. Transport currently has four major projects under the biodiversity offset scheme. Two of those projects have fully acquitted their offset obligations, and the offsets for the other two projects are on track to be acquitted prior to project impacts. The majority of state significant transport projects are under previous biodiversity schemes and have generated a range of biodiversity outcomes and benefits through conservation measures and offsets. The West Connects new M5, which is now called the M8...
Ms Morgan, excuse me, could you just move the microphone closer to you? Thank you. You can slide it over to you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. The West Connects new M5, which is now called the M8, is a good example of where conservation measures were used to complement a biodiversity offset. The project was required to offset impacts to seven hectares of green and golden belfrag, belfrog foraging habitat within Colgra Golf Course. And consistent with the rules of the scheme at the time, those credits were obtained from a site on the mid-north coast. However, the project conditions of approval also included the implementation of a green and golden belfrog plan of management to ensure the protection of the frog population in the vicinity of the project works, and the implementation of a habitat creation and captive breeding programme. During delivery, Transport avoided direct impacts to the small population of green and golden belfrogs present in a constructed pond on the site. The Habitat Creation and Captive Breeding Programme was implemented in partnership with Symbio Wildlife Park and a population of green and golden...
We're right to go. Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome to our next and final session for today's hearing. And I now welcome our next witnesses. We'll start with swearing in those of you who need to be sworn in. So I'll start with you, Ms Morgan, if you could please state your name and position, title and swear either or neither in affirmation.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Julie Morgan. I'm the Executive Director of Environment and Sustainability and Transport for New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Ms Emery.
Hello, I'm Ingrid Emery, Executive Director of Project Interfaces and Programme Management at Water Infrastructure, New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr Gainesford and Ms Dumazel, you've both been previously sworn in, so we don't have to go to you. And finally, Dr Atticus Fleming, I understand you are tuning in remotely. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Yes, if we can go to you now to do the same, thanks.
I don't have it in front of me, so I'm going to try and remember. I solemnly, completely and totally confirm that the evidence I'm about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And your name and position, title as well.
Mr Atticus Fleming.
Mister, yes, that's what I thought. Thank you very much, Mr Fleming. For some reason, you always get Dr Fleming in all of these hearings, and you correct us every time. Okay, thank you very much. Now, I understand, Ms Morgan, that you have the opening statement for your group. If you could proceed, please.
Thank you. I'm pleased to appear as a witness before the inquiry in my role as Executive Director of Environment and Sustainability within the Safety, Environment and Regulation Division of Transport. As the committee may be aware, Transport for New South Wales is a major participant in the Biodiversity Offset Scheme, but our first priority in relation to environmental impacts is not to offset our impact, but to avoid impacts on biodiversity and to mitigate any impacts to the greatest extent practicable. This is a core part of our assessment processes at all stages of development and carries into the delivery of infrastructure. We're very conscious of the environmental impacts of our projects and endeavour to minimise those impacts at all stages. Where impacts cannot be avoided or mitigated, we work to secure any offsets as early as possible, particularly when we know that competition for biodiversity credits will be high and to avoid the long compliance tails that characterise previous schemes. We actively assist in developing the credit market by supporting local landholders to generate credits and by using our own land to create credits. Transport has assisted private landholders to generate 16,400 credits across 2,022 hectares of land, and we've generated more than 17,300 credits across 1,400 hectares of transport-owned land. We support a robust and transparent credit market by publicly advertising for credits through expression of interest processes and by taking a consistent approach to offers for credits and pricing. Transport currently has four major projects under the Biodiversity Offset Scheme. Two of those projects have fully acquitted their offset obligations, and the offsets for the other two projects are on track to be acquitted prior to project impacts. The majority of state significant transport projects are under previous biodiversity schemes and have generated a range of biodiversity outcomes and benefits through conservation measures and offsets. The West Connects new M5, which is now called the M8.
Ms Morgan, excuse me, could you just move the microphone closer to you? Thank you. You can slide it over to you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. The West Connects new M5, which is now called the M8, is a good example of where conservation measures were used to complement a biodiversity offset. The project was required to offset impacts to seven hectares of green and golden belfrog foraging habitat within Colgra Golf Course, and consistent with the rules of the scheme at the time, those credits were obtained from a site on the mid-north coast. However, the project conditions of approval also included the implementation of a green and golden belfrog plan of management to ensure the protection of the frog population in the vicinity of the project works, and the implementation of a habitat creation and captive breeding programme. During delivery, Transport avoided direct impacts to the small population of green and golden belfrogs present in a constructed pond on the site. The Habitat Creation and Captive Breeding Programme was implemented in partnership with Symbio Wildlife Park, and a population of green and golden belfrogs is now established in specially constructed ponds on a transport site at Arncliffe, and the green and golden belfrogs are also still being recorded in their original habitat on the golf course. Another example of offsets is the Wurkogu de Ballin, a portion of the Pacific Highway Upgrade, which is the largest transport biodiversity offset package to date. Wurkogu de Ballin are involved construction of 165 kilometres of road, and the residual biodiversity impact after avoiding and mitigating impacts was assessed at 857 hectares. The $50 million offset package includes 4,660 hectares of offsets, over 30 properties which meet the like-for-like requirements and which will have in perpetuity protection and management. These are just two examples of how Transport works within the scheme to offset unavoidable impacts of infrastructure development. Half our first priority remains to avoid and mitigate those impacts wherever possible. Thank you for the opportunity to address the committee.
Thank you very much. Now, I'm going to go to the opposition first for questions. Over to you, Ms Penny Sharp.
Thank you. Thank you for coming along today. I might just actually start with you, Ms Morgan, and thank you very much for your opening remarks. You mentioned that four projects too are completed in terms of their offset requirements, which are underway. Can you just identify for us which ones those are?
Yes, thanks for your question. So those two projects are the M6 Extension Stage One, which had 92 credits which have now been retired, and Sydney Metro, Sydney International Speedway, which had five credits which have now been retired. The other two projects are the Western Harbour Tunnel, which has two credits, species credits, and Sydney Metro, Western Sydney Airport, which has 1,100 ecosystem credits and 1,300 species credits. And both those projects are in the process of acquitting their obligations prior to project impacts, which is when they must be retired.
And what's the timeframe on that?
What's prior to project?
When do you expect the impact? When do you expect the impact to start?
The impact starts usually when construction starts or where there's impact to that particular species.
Yep. So can you give us an idea about what that timeframe is?
I don't have the details around that. I believe the Western Harbour Tunnel credits will be retired imminently. The Sydney Metro project, I believe, has, it's, I'm sorry, I can't, I'd have to take that on notice and come back to you and see what we can find.
It's fine, you can take on notice, that's no problem. Thank you, that's just helpful. And I just wanted to ask you, I mean, obviously, forward planning, I mean, you know, transport projects have a long lead time before they start, and I was interested in the comments and it's, you know, the try to avoid and minimise before you actually go to offset. Do you have, you know, within Transport and your role or elsewhere, is there, I mean, is there a kind of a plan? And I saw a document that talks about, you know, the forward planning of these projects and the likelihood, the likelihood, because, I mean, you know, some of them clearly you cannot avoid to deal with. So there is going to be, there is going to be a biodiversity offset requirement. I mean, how is that sort of tracked internally?
Thanks for the question. I think the best way to answer that is to say the biodiversity impacts are assessed on a project-by-project basis. Where there is a large programme of works, we do do strategic assessments of the likely potential impact across a programme of works, and we do that because it's actually critical to understanding, it's critical to understand the likely potential impacts and to drive the avoidance. So having a good idea of what the impact might be and what the cost of offsetting that might be factors into all those early planning decisions around route options and other considerations, and then it's continually factored into detailed planning and assessment.
But it's done project by project, it's not a kind of consolidated overview of the infrastructure pipeline?
It's done at a strategic level for programmes, but then it also has to be repeated project by project because it needs quite a precise assessment of what the impact is for each project.
Thank you, thank you very much. I think this is one for you, Mr Fleming. I just wanted to, my understanding is that the BSE charge system was, is in draft form, is that correct? Can you give us an update on where that is up to, please?
Yes, and Ms Dumazel might add some additional detail, but the BCT has released, circulated a draft proposal and they can comment. I think they're in the process of still meeting with some key stakeholders, formulating a proposal that would be.
Excuse me, Mr Fleming. Mr Fleming, I'm just going to interrupt, sorry Penny, I'm just going to interrupt. Your sound just cut out for a little bit there, which is going to make it extremely difficult for hand side. Is there, can you move closer to your computer or can you use to the sound and maybe just repeat the last thing you said, your last sentence if you can?
Yeah, so I think what may have been missing was a statement that the BCT were in the final stages of consulting with that office, and there would then be a proposal that would be considered by government. But Ms Dumazel can provide.
Thank you. I just would, just very, Mr Fleming, you were going to have to speak quite slowly, I think, and closer to your microphone so we catch every word of it. Ms Dumazel, are you wanting to?
No, there's nothing further to add on that one, BCT.
Sure, go for it. Penny.
So, yeah, so sorry, so you don't have a timeframe, when this was supposed to be in place, I thought by now, or obviously in a second round of consultation on the draft, I'm not prescribing extra consultation, just trying to understand timeframe for this actually to be put in place.
Yep. I understand the BCT is just working through the final details of that and just going through with the, making sure that they're taking on board the feedback from the stakeholders and getting, and getting the charge system right. So I don't have an exact time for that, but they're working through the detail as quickly as possible.
Okay, you're not able to take on notice a timeframe in terms of when you expect that to be completed?
I'm happy to take that on notice.
Great, thank you. I wanted to just get an update. I'm not sure who the right person, I suspect it's Mr Fleming. You know, we've been through a number of these hearings now, and obviously the issue of investigations around, concerns around insider trading and the arrangements for staff within the department to be participating in programmes. I understand there's been progress there, but are you able to give us any update on where the various investigations are up to?
Again, I think that's a question for Ms Dumazel. In terms of our internal, I don't think we can comment on the internal investigation. Ms Dumazel might be able to provide an update.
Yep. Yes, I can give a further update. So in terms of the ICAC investigation in relation for the department, the department was advised on the 23rd of March 2022 that the Commission has conducted an investigation into the matter, which has included an extensive review of records and emails, along with numerous interviews. The investigation did not reveal sufficient evidence to suggest serious corrupt conduct had occurred. In the absence of further cogent information being received, the Commission will not be taking any further action in relation to the investigation of this matter. In terms of the conflict of interest protocol, that's in place, and our governance area has been providing support to staff in terms of making sure that they've got the information available to support them in their decisions.
Thank you for that, that's very helpful. So do you actually have a number of, the number of staff that are actually participants in, in, you know, in the programme? In the offset, so whether they actually are owning land, you know, trading credits?
So for the Biodiversity Conservation and Science Directorate, there are two staff, and we're working through that process with them.
Right. And, I mean, my understanding from the last time we talked about this, that they're really going to have to make a choice of divesting or moving, that they can't be active participants, is that, is that correct?
That's correct, and our protocol's on our website as well, and that details there's a 12-month period to divest.
Yep, thank you. And that's two active staff. Are you able to tell us how many staff in total, over the period of time since the programme's been in place, have been participants?
Um, they've been four.
I had to take on notice.
Yeah, they've been four staff. But I will take it on notice. I will take it on notice, but my understanding is that they're a four staff.
And is that just within the cluster? So for example, national parks and wildlife staff, would they be captured by that?
I would have to take that on notice.
Right, okay, thank you. There's, I mean, the changes that were put in place were to extend biodiversity offsetting to more projects over time and include major projects and those kind of things. There's been comments recently by some members of government and others about the cost of biodiversity offsets, and there's been some speculation that there are plans or ideas that state significant development and other, you know, other types of projects should be, not necessarily be included. Is there any work being undertaken that would look at removing classes of projects from the scheme?
Not that I'm aware of. Our biggest, the thing that we've been working on has been around improving supply, to support supply and looking at the pipeline of projects. So thinking about demand and then working with to, how we can increase demand to support, increase supply to support the demand that we're seeing through with the scheme.
Thank you. And it might not be your area, maybe, maybe it's, maybe it's Mr Gainesford. Mr Gainesford, are you aware of any discussion or otherwise, or work being undertaken that would look at changing the types of projects, these are obviously government projects, that would be subject to biodiversity offsetting?
So, Ms Sharp, I'm not aware that there is any plans or any work ongoing about removing types of projects from their application to the scheme. I think in our evidence that we presented at the last time that we're here, and Ms Dumazel might want to add to this, we did talk about, I guess what I would describe as some fine tuning of the way that the system is working, particularly for linear critical state significant infrastructure, primarily around the timing of when those offsets are being provided. But, you know, there is no work that I'm aware of that is suggesting that types of projects are going to be removed from the system.
And when you talk about the fine tuning, I mean, there's, you know, the requirement, as I understand it, is that the, you know, the credits need to be dealt with before the impact occurs. I mean, when you talk about fine tuning, is that essentially allowing more, like, that basically the projects can start, the impact can start before the credits are acquitted?
In some cases, that's correct. Yes, that's, that's, that's one of the things that we're looking at. I'm not sure if Ms Dumazel wants to add to my answer there.
Um, the, the, the main aspect that we've been working on is thinking about how we can best support proponents, be that government proponents or external proponents, to try and think about their biodiversity requirements sooner rather than later. And it, and that the work that we've been doing around that is really trying to engage with proponents upfront so that they don't get the end of their whole kind of planning period, and then thinking about biodiversity offsets. Because if you can do it from the very start, you've got a better chance of doing that avoid minimise aspect, and we're, and we're really focused on trying to support proponents. And we've actually, we've actually just put in place a hotline that anyone can call us now if they want to talk about how they can engage with the scheme. But then also with, in terms of government projects, we're working much more closely with our counterparts right up front. Because then if, if you've, if you can think about what the overall costs are, and we can really kind of think about how you can avoid those high value areas, then what it means is that then those choices are made at the very start rather than at the end. So certainly from my perspective, that's, that's, that's the focus of my team, as well as all the other improvements that we're trying to undertake to help not only proponents but landowners who want to create biodiversity stewardship agreements. Because if we can then get that supply and demand kind of working much better together, then that means, that will also mean that the offsets are dealt with sooner. So that's, that's, that's my priority.
Just that. I mean, it sort of brings me, in the last, in the last session, we had UDIA come in, obviously representative of developers, and they made the point, which I didn't think was unreasonable, that, listen, the earliest consideration of what the biodiversity impact is on any, on any kind of land change use before you even got to the project stage is actually very useful and doesn't happen. And they were suggesting that there needs to be more work done upfront, you know, as a rezoning's happening, for example, because we don't really get to the EIS, really at the EIS stage, the full biodiversity impact is dealt with, that's a long way along the process. I mean, do you, I mean, has there been, is there, has there been consideration in terms of that upfront assessment at the rezoning stage? I mean, if you just look at the South West Growth Corridor and the whole issue with koalas, we're playing catch-up, you know, this, this land's been rezoned, it's worth a lot of money, there's thousands and thousands, you know, there's thousands of houses going into an area, we're trying to sort of back deal, you know, at the end to deal with the impact on koalas rather than before that was rezoned, there had actually been a very clear understanding of the impact. I think it would perhaps change some of that. I mean, is that, is that a consideration? Is it anywhere in the mix in terms of changes?
Yep. Certainly, thinking about it at that planning stage, and Mr Gainesford might want to add more to this, but as well as having the biodiversity offset scheme team with me, I've also got a, a planning team that works, an environment planning team that works with my planning colleagues. And one of the things that we're looking to do is really at that, either at that regional planning stage, as well as at the, you know, a proponent can do a bio certification at the start, and which is, doing it upfront makes life a lot easier. It means that we can really think about the strategic environmental outcomes that we want. And so as well as the work that the biodiversity offset scheme team is doing in terms of helping proponents when they're at that point where they're, they're doing their biodiversity assessment reports, we've, we're also, I've got a team that's really looking at what, what's the landscape and how can we work with our planning colleagues who are doing that regional planning, so that we can try and think about what are the strategic areas of biodiversity that we can kind of include at that planning stage? And, and we would encourage proponents and, in terms of that bio certification. But Mr Gainesford, I'm not sure if you have anything more to add?
Yeah, look, thank you, thank you, Ms Dumazel. So, I mean, I would endorse what Ms Dumazel was saying there. Obviously, you know, it is, there are mechanisms within the existing system with biodiversity certification processes, and there are examples of where this has been done in the past, such as some of the work that was done a while ago on the South West Growth area and the, and the North West Growth area.
You know, Mr Gainesford, there's a lot of controversy about the backwards and forwards on that. So there's been work done. I mean, I think some people would argue very strongly that it's been chipped away at from the minute it was done, but sure.
Yeah, so, I mean.
Don't expect to define it.
No, no. So, so I guess what I would, I would say is that, yes, we're always open to, you know, looking at mechanisms. I very much endorse what Ms Dumazel is saying, that the earlier that you can consider these types of matters, you know, the better.
And look, just, sorry, I know that I'm conscious that other committee members probably got questions, but I just sort of, well, just specifically to deal with that, I mean, there's been all this work done on the Blue and Green Grid across Sydney, there's the plan, that's all in place. How is that triggered in terms of the, how, where formally is it included in that? If we're moving to, everyone accepts that the sooner, you know, there's land, it's got, you know, important biodiversity on it, it's also earmarked for development. How are those kind of tools that have been done by government, where do they fit into the system where they are dealt with? Or is it just that, you know, as we're going through the very long EIS process, that these things kind of get incorporated along the way up? I suppose I'm looking for, you know, for recommendations for this committee. And I know that you're a public servant and that these are policy questions, but, and I'm not asking you to give your opinion, I'm really just asking about what what is the mechanism for the, you know, things like the Green and Blue Grid to be actively considered at the rezoning and those earlier stages of the planning process rather than sort of, when, when, when the land's been bought, when the expectations are made in terms of how much money's going to be yielded off that, off that, um, trying to bolt those things in late, later seems to be failing.
Uh, look, Ms. Sharp, uh, it's, it's not my expertise, I must admit, in terms of uh that work that's been done uh around the Blue and Green Grids. But I can speak from a, a consideration from an environmental impact statement point of view, uh, which is that there are requirements, uh, and, and certainly ones that we, uh, you know, we carefully consider in our assessment around the incorporation of that, that strategic planning work that's been done, uh, you know, both from a formal sense, uh, in terms of where it's been, been adopted as part of state environmental planning policies, but also where, uh, you know, they're, they're, they're non-statutory policies of, of, of government as well. So it's certainly something that's taken quite, quite seriously through the EIS process.
Yep. And, and I might just add to that. Um, so uh in terms of the regional planning process, uh, um, we have um, uh, regional based teams that work with um planning in, to look at a, a broader scale. So they will provide advice to, it's a different part of the, of the department in, in, from Mr. Gainesford's area. Um, but we work closely with them to provide them advice in those higher level strategic planning processes. So we feed information into that. Uh, we also have a mechanism uh with the, uh, under the Biodiversity Conservation Act called Strategic BioCertification. And what that does is allow us to look at it from a strategic landscape scale and that's the process that's happening with the Cumberland Plain Conservation Plan, uh, where, um, at the moment considering that, um, that plan, um, and that strategic bio certification now. And I think that's, that is the mechanism, um, to be able to look at, uh, what are the overall values that you want from a, from a strategic landscape scale? Um, and then the other aspect that we, to, to, to be able to look at it from that strategic bio certification, um, we, we really rely on um our biodiversity outlook report and um the information that comes out of our science.
Sorry, who does that?
That is, the biodiversity outlook report is a, a, is through um our group, um, and it's the, our Science Economics and Insights Division and the Biodiversity Conservation and Science Division in Environment and Heritage Group. Um, and it's, um, so the outlook report, um, the indicators for that were developed with um CSIRO. Uh, we've had one um outlook report released and I'm not sure about the timing of the next one, but what we do is we look at that report and we work closely with our science colleagues, um, to see what's happening, what the trends overall are in biodiversity.
Well, I can imagine that none of the trends are good, um, because all the other indicators on a reality test are not good. So, so you, so, sorry, this is a standalone biodiversity report that I suppose just provides a, a, an overall, you know, a snapshot over how the whole state is tracking. Again, my question, this will be my last question, Chair, before I answer others, or where I've taken up a lot of time.
That's fine, yeah.
Um, is, is how does that get?
Yeah.
You know, so about, it's incredibly valuable and I think that it's very good that you do it. My concern is, again, I'm sure that it will, I'm sure that it will be saying that there are problems everywhere, how that then translates into a project by project approach, um, and how the biodiversity offset system works to actually try, um, to protect, um, you know, that critical habitat, um, and land, um, where, where we're, you know, under significant pressure.
And, and so we use that information and we feed it into our biodiversity assessment method. And so the biodiversity assessment method is that is the transparent way of assessing biodiversity at the, um, at the project level, but also at the landscape level too. Um, and so, uh, the information that from those reports are fed in, um, and so that's how we then take that into account.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Sharp. Um, so the, so the latest, the latest biodiversity outlook report was done, when did you say?
Uh, I'd have to take that on notice. I.
Was it some time ago? Like 2017 or something, or?
No, I, I, well, I'd have to take that on notice. Uh, Mr. Fleming?
Yeah, Chair, I.
Thank you.
I can't give you, I can't give you an exact date, but it was released, um, post the 2019, 25. I just say that, I remember there was a bit of extra work done to try and take into account the impact of those files.
Okay, thank you. Yes, because I, I have a copy of it in front of me and it's just all of the data seems to be up to, up to 2017. But I do note that you have referred to that both in your response today, Ms. Dumizel, as well as your, the questions on notice in, in terms of how we're tracking. But looking at this, i- in terms of data up to 2017, it would appear that this is kind of potentially five years old. Would that be right, Mr. Fleming, that most of the data in this outlook report?
I'd have to take it on notice. Uh, it, it may very well be that the extra information to take out files was to supplement our data that is a little older. So you may be correct. We'll, we'll give you an answer on notice if that's okay.
Yeah, okay. I'll just, just going back to the answers that, that were given in response to our, this was after our hearing last year and the questions on notice provided by the government. It does, it does link to a question, I think, that I asked about the cumulative impacts from, of multiple developments on threatened species. Part of the response that the government provided was indeed linking to this assessment report. This is the assessment report for the Biodiversity Indicator Programme. So I'll just let you know that it does say that this was published in June 2021. But again, when you go through and look at the various indicators, it does suggest that, in everything that I have read in it, that it's just up until 2017. So is there another outlook report that is due out soon?
Uh, uh, I'm not sure that, of the date that it's due, but it will, there, there is a um obligation to provide a regular report, the outlook report. I'm just not, I'd have to take that on notice on when the next report is due to, due to come out.
And does it actually go into individual species? The, the report in terms of the Biodiversity Indicator Programme, when you look at this report, it's extremely broad. Like, it, it, it highlights a few, it highlights a few case studies of, of species, but I'm just wondering in terms of the science behind it, does it go into individual threatened species or?
I'd have to take that on notice.
Mr. Fleming, you're not aware?
Uh, I think it is better for us to take on notice that, a detailed response for you. I, I would only add the comment that I, I think that report is intended to provide a statewide analysis, but as a result, it's pitched at a relatively high level. But it's drawing data from many sources and that would include data on individual species. That's my expectation. We will confirm.
Because it is, it is frustrating because it was, it was a question that I asked in the last hearing. I actually asked a question about, the question was, um, that there is no way within the scheme to measure cumulative impacts of multiple developments on threatened species. One of the, this was a question that the government took on notice, Ms. Dumizel, you took it on notice, you've responded, but with that question on notice with this document that doesn't seem to, doesn't seem to highlight anything in relation to individual threatened species. I'm asking it again and you're about to take it on notice again. Like, is that seriously what's happening? That you cannot tell me whether there is any mechanism for the government to be able to, um, to be able to assess cumulative impacts of developments on threatened species under the biodiversity offset scheme?
The outlook report looks at cumulative impacts ac- across, across the state, so not just um with development. Um, the question.
How does it do that?
So I would have to take that on notice because that's my colleague, um, it's, it's a, it's a, a, a different part of, um, of the directorate that looks after that, um, report. As Doc, as Mr. Fleming was saying, that, um, uh, that there is more detail, like that's a high level report, but there's more detail that sits underneath that. Um, but the, the questions you're asking in specifically relating to threatened species, I would prefer to take that on notice. So I'm giving you the, the, the best, um, that, you know, we can ask, um, that part of the organisation, um, to provide that information.
Okay, so ultimately with, again, just going through some of the responses to the questions on notice taken last time, it seems to be that, so the biodiversity assessment method just assesses, does, does that take it, does that take into account cumulative impact?
It, it considers the state of biodiversity now, like as the, in terms of the recent information gets fed into.
Yeah, from BioNet.
Yeah, from, yeah, into, into the assessment method. So that then, um, when a proponent is preparing a, a, a report, um, and how it will calculate whether, how many, uh, species credits might be required, it's, it's taking into account the existing information, um, that we've got. So, um, I, I don't have the details with me now about how that process occurs. I don't have that information in front of me, but I know that they regularly, uh, feed the information in.
Yeah.
So that we've got the most up to date information that's available.
But what it seems to be actually is that the information is coming once the threatened species is more at threat. Um, however, that is fed in via, uh, departmental officials, feed it into a programme, which could take years and years and years and years, I understand, in terms of being poorly staffed. They feed that into BioNet. Let's take, for example, koalas, although there's probably a better example to use. But that's fed in to BioNet. But in the meantime, if that's not fed in, development after development can occur. Say, for example, clearing koala habitat, there's no, there's no database that you have that is maintained by the government that is able to say, well, hang on, all of this has just been cleared in the last two years. We have assessed 8,000 hectares, for example, and approved. And we know that 8,000 hectares of koala habitat has been cleared. That's probably a bit of a, um, a sign to, to not allow this, this application for 500 hectares to be cleared. There's nothing that says that?
It takes.
It's almost the other way around. It's like the, the species has to be incredibly at risk firstly through BioNet?
No, I, I, it's, there's, there's a couple of different layers.
Please tell me.
So there's the one around the, the, the status of a species. So, you know, and there's a hierarchy with that. So the biodiversity assessment method considers that. And the method looks at it from a, so that's the kind of cumulative kind of, you know, like you're looking at it in terms of, uh, what, what the status is and, and what's happening there.
Which is in cumulative impact.
Well, it's, well, no, it is.
Historical impact, I suppose, if they're threatened.
It's, um, looking at the status of, of that and feeding that in, in terms of, of the assessment method. But then it's around the actual site. So what are the values of, on that site? Um, what, uh, and then, uh, what is the intent of the proponent, um, in terms of the development? So that then, um, for example, if you've got a, um, a, a, a large apartment block that might be going up and it's, it's, it's going to be, uh, impacting on high value biodiversity, um, for example, it could have, uh, koala trees, uh, that are there. Um, then what the assessment method does is that it takes you through the hierarchy. So it, in terms of the choices that you make to avoid it. So if you moved that apartment block.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because we have had that explained to us a fair bit. So at that point.
Yeah.
If there is, say, 23 different applications across the state, say, or for, for different projects that are going to impact on a particular ecosystem or species that is at risk, at no point does anything get triggered, that it's all happening together and it's a cumulative impact and we're going to have potential species extinction. It's still assessed individually, isn't it, Ms. Dumizel? That's actually what does happen. Because we've asked questions, I know that my colleague, Ms. Sharp, asked questions similar to this, uh, at the last hearing. It was all taken on notice and I've just gone through the answers. And in fact, there isn't any way for the department to assess the cumulative impact on threatened species with this scheme at the time of assessment and approval.
So the scheme fits into a broader framework. It's, it's, it's one element of the Biodiversity Conservation Act and the Biodiversity Conservation Act has quite a, a number of different elements. So if this, this particular component, the biodiversity offset scheme, is to, uh, help proponents to discharge their responsibilities, um, in terms of any biodiversity loss, but.
I, I mean, maybe I can just add to this and hopefully it's helpful, Chair. I think when we last, uh, presented to you, we talked about the Cumulative Impact Assessment Guidelines that the department had released, uh, last year. And so it's certainly the expectation of those guidelines, that when we're assessing uh an environmental impact statement, that there is that consideration that's happening of potential future development. Uh, so it's not just based on historic, um, and I take the point, um, uh, around, around individual threatened species. But from the department's point of view, there is a requirement to look at potential uh other projects that could have a cumulative impact with, with the project that's being assessed.
Yeah, so thank you for, for mentioning that because I was also going to bring, bring that up. So with the question, the, the responses to the questions on, the answers to the questions on notice, yes, there was a link. I, I tried to follow that, that link, uh, to the cumulative assessment, uh, guidelines and in, I couldn't get to the link, it had page not found and I tried to find it on Google. I found it incredibly hard and couldn't find it on your website. So how is that going in terms of, uh, proponents accessing that? And I assume that's a voluntary guidelines. Explain how it works in terms of, um, multiple developments.
Yes, so, uh, so yes, it is a, it is, it is a guideline, as you're saying there, but it, it effectively, uh, I guess brings, um, uh, brings rigor to an assessment process that was already part of environmental impact assessment. Um, so cumulative impact assessment is something that, uh, has always been, uh, an element of environmental impact assessment. So from, from an assessor's point of view, when they're assessing, uh, a, a project, they're interested both in, um, uh, site-based, uh, issues that might be accumulating. So for example, and, and probably the best example I can give is where, uh, there's impacts um on a, on a road system. Um, so if you've got a development that's actually, uh, generating a certain level of traffic and there are other developments that are happening in the area that have either got approval or, uh, they're, they're, they're under development, um, then there is a requirement to, uh, assess the, assess the cumulative impacts associated with those projects. But it also is not just, uh, based on, uh, a certain specific geography. Uh, it also, uh, does have requirements to look at, uh, broader landscapes where they're, where they're relevant as well.
Okay, thank you. I'd, just again, trying to, I think, just get a, a, a sense of, um, just how much land clearing, how much loss of biodiversity the biodiversity offset scheme is facilitating overall, how much loss of threatened species the biodiversity offset scheme is facilitating and how much it's actually saving? Because, uh, in your submission, the, you say there is a section there that says biodiversity outcomes are being secured and delivered. And I kind of am looking at the evidence and, and I can't, I'm just not sure that's the case. You're, you, you suggest that, and it's great, the biodiversity conservation, um, you know, trust, biodiversity stewardship sites, protecting over 27,480. stewardship sites, protecting over 27,480 hectares of land, that's great, but you provided a table in your answers to questions on notice which says, the table one, development and clearing activities, finalised biodiversity assessments between 25th of August 2017 and 19th of January 2022, and for example, in that, there were 206 major projects, of which the major projects have generated 694,632 species credits. And then in the stewardship agreement applications, finalised biodiversity assessments in terms of total species credits over the same time, in any agreement, it's 176,923. So that's a difference of, that's a difference of potentially roughly 500,000 species credits. So firstly, just a specific question around that, why haven't those 500,000 species credits for the major projects been put into biodiversity stewardship agreements yet? Do we know why? Why there's such a gap? What that means for-
I don't have, I don't have those figures in front of me, so I'd like to-
Have a vague idea of why that-
I'd like to take that on notice.
It's a lot-
What I wanted to say though was that the scheme itself has a principle of no net loss, and so that's the principle of the scheme, and so, and then you have the decisions that are made around individual major projects, but I will take that on notice about the specific numbers that you've, I recall those numbers in the submission, but I'd like to take that question on notice.
Ms Morgan, do you have any idea in terms of, because a lot of those would be transport for New South Wales projects, wouldn't they?
Thanks.
A decent number.
Thanks for the question, I suspect a lot would, I don't have that information to hand though, I'm sorry, I wouldn't dare to speculate on it.
I'll just go to you for Mr Pearson.
So just for clarification, so developers can buy these credits even though we haven't, even though there is not in place yet, landholders or participants who are going to be able to deliver the protection of species that those credits are purchasing, is that the case?
So a proponent has a number of different ways to discharge its obligations, it can, a proponent can create their own biodiversity stewardship agreements on their own sites, or they can find someone close by to do it, they can purchase credits on the market, or they can pay in the BCT, to the BCT. So if, often if there's, if a proponent is finding it difficult to source the credits, then the option to pay into the BCT is probably the best option.
So there are developments that can commence, you did mention that developments can actually commence, and even though it's preferable that the offset requirements analysed and concluded, the earlier the better, but you were saying that some developments are occurring and proceeding without those assessments being done, or what is the requirement that, when it is, is it required that they, that those assessments are made?
Offsets generally have to be made prior to commencement of construction-
Okay.
And so, but payments can be, offsets can be met through paying to the BCT, that has a time period to find the offsets.
If a landholder wants to participate in this and offer up some of their land for offsets for other developers, what's the process? Do they have to, does your department, I understand, does it do an assessment of the property for that?
A landholder who wants to develop a biodiversity stewardship agreement on their site would work with the BCT.
And how much does it cost them to have that assessment done by the BCT?
That would be, that would be a question I'd have to take on notice for the BCT.
It's just why I'm raising that, is it was, it was an issue raised earlier that sometimes the cost can be rather prohibitive and therefore not attractive for this contribution for providing biodiversity offsets, and it was argued that maybe, that there would be more participation if that cost was actually absorbed in the payment of the credits to the landholder. Has that been considered at all?
Look, I'd have to take that on notice, but I would say that the BCT does have a loan facility as well for landholders who would be wanting to enter into a biodiversity stewardship agreement. Certainly one of the things that we're really looking at is how do we increase supply? And what are the barriers for landholders to participate in the scheme, to be able to set up a biodiversity stewardship agreement? So we're working quite closely with the BCT on that, and I know the BCT have got their loan facility, but I'll take that on notice.
And just one last question, considering courts are actually now taking this into consideration in terms of impacts on the environment, but they're now taking into account climate change, impacts on climate change. In the assessment of what might be the, what would be the impact on species, rather than the actual, you know, in situ impact on the prop, on the land that's going to be developed, has it been considered to factor in what will be the impact, potential impact on climate change by the clearing, or whether it be an industry that's going to be built there? Is that taken into account of, is that taken into account the potential impact on climate change by the development, and that climate change's impact on species?
I'd have to take that question on notice, I do know that the biodiversity assessment method does take into account, you know, changes in terms of what might happen in terms of the trends, in terms of temperature and so, but I'd like to take that on notice because that's, to make sure that I provide the best answer.
Okay, so all from you at the moment, Chair.
Okay, I think that Mr Scott Barrett has a few questions on this as well, just looking at you now, Scott, yeah?
Yes, thank you, I would like to come back to that supply issue we were talking about before Ms Dumazell, but if I'm preoccupied for a little while, so I'll give you a break to have a drink of water. Possibly Mr Gainesford, we've heard a little bit this morning, and we've read about how often this scheme can disproportionately affect developments or people, or proponents, I think you've heard of them before, in regional areas, we're talking lower cost areas, you know, the example, the numbers I picked out before, you know, $200,000 block in Cobah versus $2 million block near Penrith, the biosecurity, the biodiversity offsets are going to be in much larger proportion of that development or that project. Are we seeing this proportionally in regional developments harder?
I'm not actually sure I am best placed to answer that question, Mr Barrett, but what I can say is that there are obviously a number of major projects which are in regional areas at the moment, looking to secure offsets. One that comes to mind is the work that ARTC are doing around inland rail, and I know there's a lot of discussions that are happening with landholders about potential offsets associated with those, but yes, I wouldn't be in a position to make comment about the value of land, no, I'm not best placed for that, sorry.
Is there anyone that can talk to the, I guess, the effects on regional versus metro areas with this?
I can't speak to the effect on regional versus metro, Mr Barrett, but I would just make the comment that one of the key objectives going forward is to increase supply, and that obviously involves delivering benefits to regional communities who are able to develop these biodiversity stewardship agreements. So we are very aware of the need to reduce the barriers and reduce costs, so there can be more biodiversity stewardship agreements, more credits, and therefore more income funds flowing into regional areas as base to apply these credits. But I think there are two, there are always two sides to that point, but we are acutely aware of the opportunity that exists in regional New South Wales, and we are also aware of the need to tweak settings to make sure those opportunities are realised.
So I guess in the initial work happening on that space, what are seen as the biggest prohibitive, the biggest, I guess, hurdles for more landholders taking up the biodiversity's stewardship?
I think it would be reasonable to say that we need to reduce the barriers and streamline processes for developing biodiversity stewardship agreements, I don't think that's controversial to say, and the department's committed to do.
Okay, so earlier we heard about it was just too complex for landholders to do it, the people we spoke to were very well versed in ecology and biodiversity, and they were struggling with it, I'm guessing, you know, the bulk of our landholders in that area would struggle with that, is that sort of the area we're looking at chipping in on?
Yes.
Okay. The, I'll wait for a second and maybe come back, if that's all right Chair, if others have questions?
Yeah, okay. Sorry, is that you, Mr Mallard, who wants to jump in?
It isn't, it is indeed.
Okay, sure, yeah.
Good afternoon, Mr Fleming, how are you? I also have some questions following on from evidence today and previously, around the calculator mechanism, I'm not sure who would be the person to talk about, I know the government's done some work around this, I understand, recently, probably counted the two of us, it was about a black box, for want of a better term, and they were suggesting a more open model that, similar to the basics model, which for development in terms of environmental energy saves and sustainability of a building, so does anyone want to talk about the work that's going on around the calculator at the moment?
I'll make a very general comment, Ms Dumazell may be able to add some detail. The work's been led by the BCT at the moment, my sense of things talking to is some stakeholders, is that there is a general agreement that we need to improve on what is there, and that the, if you like, the replacement or the new version of whatever's put in place needs to be a sort of cost-based model. But I think it's fair to say that's still a work in process, landing that model in the right place, BCT has put some, something out for private consultation, I think what you're hearing is a response to what's been put on the table, I've received some feedback from other stakeholders, so we're working through that feedback now, with a view, remembering that that is one pathway in order to secure your credits, and it's the pathway through the BCT in effect, but we do need to-
Yeah.
I'm not sure if Ms Dumazell has any-
I mean, we clearly articulate, articulated the concerns we had with the calculator in our discussion paper last year when we were looking to take the calculator down, and so, and as Mr Fleming has indicated, it is meant to just be the price that's paid into the BCT, so that's why the BCT is looking at, you know, the new developer charge model, the new developer charge framework, and what we had seen was that the calculator was, is, has been having a perverse impact on the market, and it was, the intention was never that it would, that it would then be used as a signal for other ways of creating credits or working with landholders or trying to get credits on the market. So we clearly acknowledge the issues with the calculator, one of the things that we're looking to do is when the new developer charge model is up and running for that, just that component of paying into the BCT, is actually having some market tools, some really simple tools that proponents and landholders can use to determine, you know, what the best price that they should be paying for their credits, because that can help them make commercial decisions about whether they try and, you know, source the credits from their own site, or maybe make changes to their footprint of their development, but it would also help landholders determine what price they could get for credits that they might have on their site. So one of the things that we're really working on is trying to have the right market tools that both proponents and landholders can use to make those decisions.
If I can go back to the question that Mr Barrett raised, if we are able to ensure that the barriers to biodiversity stewardship are reduced, and that is an easier pathway, that will actually reduce the need to rely on that charge of the BCT, in other words, you're relying credits from landholders rather than putting it through the BCT, and, you know, that's what I'm keen to ensuring that benefits are recognised in both regional communities but also in the environment we need to benefit.
Is the Property Council's approach to the basics model, is that too simplistic? It seems a little bit more complex than the energy savings on building, building.
I don't know the basics model, I'm not sure if Mr Caney Department's doing it.
Look, I mean, I have some familiarity with basics, but I wouldn't hasten to compare the two types of schemes, if you like.
Yeah.
I think what the Property Council's calling for is more transparency certainly in terms of calculations, I think the previous person said that there was distortions to the market, of course, by the calculator, we've heard that from browsers, that they were looking for some consistency in terms of calculating their risk and exposure and their responsibility, I guess.
And I think one of the things is, and it all goes back to the biodiversity assessment method, because that is, because it's a repeatable method of calculating the impact on biodiversity, and it is transparent, that over time, I mean, it has been only a couple of years that this particular biodiversity assessment method's been used, and so we know we've got a lot of work to support proponents to understand that, because I mean biodiversity is very complex, we've put in a lot more support for those accredited assessors, so they're the ones that a proponent would use to do their biodiversity assessment report. So one of the things that we have been doing is, over the last year, is improving the training modules that are available to, so that accredited assessors have got the right training and the right information, so they can provide the best possible service to proponents. So I think there's a, there's a, some of the things that we've put in place are still working through the system to, for proponents to feel confident about that the, that the information that they're getting around the costs and around what they need to do, I think that's still kind of, that is still actually emerging. So it's like we've put in a lot of measures in place specifically over the last year, but it is going to take us a little bit of time to see that work through. I think the fact that we've now got a hotline that anyone can contact us, because I appreciate that, because it is complex and the biodiversity isn't a simple issue that we're dealing with, that the more that we can support people to navigate the scheme, the more that we can increase supply and work with landholders so that they can set up their biodiversity stewardship agreements, and the more that we provide the training and support, you know, to planning consent authorities and, you know, councils, that all those things will actually help to make the costs come down for proponents, but also make sure that we meet the environmental outcomes that we're looking to achieve.
Okay, thank you. Right, Shane, I'm just going to throw to Penny again, yeah, Ms Penny Sharp.
Thank you, I've got a couple of last questions, this is really about some of the things we have been supporting, so we have landholders who, you know, are involved in the scheme, and they have a significant number of concerns, one of the common concerns is the different, the perceived or otherwise different treatment of private landholders versus government when they're doing their own infrastructure projects. And they're basically making the allegation that the, you know, the- And they're basically making the allegation that, um, the, you know, the large, as I said, transport light projects and others are essentially depressing the cost of credits, um, within the scheme. Um, can someone just sort of tell me, um, A, uh, whether that is an issue? And B, if it's not, how is that, how, you know, I suppose explain why that is not an issue. I just got fairly strong allegations to spill in into submissions in relation to this.
Uh, I, I haven't done the, I haven't done the, like, the detailed analysis on, on the difference in terms of the costs that proponents are, are paying, um, for the scheme. So I, I might need to. I might need to take that one on notice.
I'm sorry to dis- sorry, it's hard when you're not in the room. Um, and I mean, how will we explain the difference in terms of the, um, cost of credits that government agencies are getting versus, um, you know, private?
I mean, uh, uh, i- it's. It goes.
What, what was the evidence, Miss Sharp? I don't think any of us heard the evidence at all.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, sorry. Look, it's, it's a bit difficult. I mean, there wasn't sort of specific, I mean, essentially, there's, I mean, the general, I mean, one of the points in, in the summaries is, I'm really just trying to go through what, what they said. There wasn't really, I didn't get very clear s- specific examples. But essentially they're saying that, you know, public sector developers are treated favorably to the detriment of pre-market operation of the scheme. And, um, the, it just basically, and the general view is that the public sector, obviously they're the biggest, some of the biggest players. I mean, you know, the projects, um, that Ms. Borgans talked about, the large projects, um, in, in, you know, uh, difficult, um, rank filled sites, you know, all, all of those things. Um, uh, uh, but essentially they're saying, and they just believe that the way in which the system operates means that there's some, uh, sort of, it's just favorable to government in relation, um, to their influence over the price of credits, um, and not only if it was just an open market scheme. I don't know whether that's true or not. I'm just trying to test that with you who.
I.
Something know more about it.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's, from, from my perspective, it's, w- we certainly have a lot of work to do to make the market operate better and to help all participants participate in the best way possible. I think, um, you know, a, a lot of that goes down to the, the skill of the accredited assessors that a, a smaller scale proponent would use or a- any proponent would use, uh, the advice that they're getting on the, on, on their development. I, I don't, I, I, I don't have any information that would, that, I, I'd need to go away and, and have a think about that, but I, I don't have any information that would suggest that. I think that it's more that there, obviously there are different players and there, there would be, um, uh, organisations who, who would use, um, different accredited assessors to, to support them in their projects. Um, and our job is to support all participants to access the scheme and to get the best possible outcomes that, 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 that we can and to reduce the cost for all proponents.
I, I think we need to understand the specific, well, is it complaining that they're getting cheaper credit or are they getting?
Yes, part, part, yeah, part of the complaint is that some, that somehow there's actually, this is just developers, it's not just government. So there's, you know, big players are able to buy what, what, what they describe as buy from the BCT off market. It's far, there's all the, so the, the allegation about preferential sort of treatment and impact of the large government projects. There's the other, the, the other sort of complaint is the operation of the BCT. And I, and I know that Mr. Elton and others aren't here. Um, but the complaint is that, um, developers are essentially being able to buy off market via the BCT and the smaller operator, smaller landholders don't really get a look in in terms of even really being considered as being somewhere where that can be purchased because it's much easier for developers just to go straight to the BCT. I'm not sure that you can comment on that though.
Um, Ms. Sharp, I might be able to assist with that. Uh, as obviously transport is a major player in the scheme. Our preference, particularly where there are a large number of credits that need to be sourced, our preference is to buy the credits from the market, from sellers, because payments to the BCT attract a twenty percent premium. So where we can, we purchase from the market, provided that the credits are available and we can negotiate a fair market price for those. Uh, we do a mixture of options around paying into the BCT versus purchasing credits. Uh, but generally, if we can, our preference is to buy from the market if the credits are there.
Great, thank you. That's actually very useful. Thank you for that. Um, I've got two more questions. Um, one is, um, your submission talks about there being about four hundred accredited assessors. Um, suggested in the last, um, sometime this morning, um, that there was only three hundred accredited assessors. Uh, we have, that's quite a big difference. Um, someone have to be able to give me a, tell me who's right?
I, uh, I don't know the exact number of today, uh, today, so I can take that on notice. But, uh, my understanding it, it is close to four hundred accredited assessors.
Yeah, okay. Well, obviously incredibly important. I mean, one of the big issues is about the time and the cost that it takes, particularly again for small landholders who are looking to do conservation on their land. That, you know, the assessment issue is big. And so we've got a bit of a debate of whether are they too many, are they too few, is it too expensive? So, yeah, if you're given the number, that would be great. Um, and look, this, this is my last question. It's sort of a broader, it's really about monitoring in the long term. Again, allegations of, you know, essentially, there's sort of two types of allegations. One is, you know, commercial operators essentially land banking for a long time, um, biodiver- you know, build up the biodiversity credits, um, sell to developers, um, you know, goes to the BCT. There's a long period before there's actually needs to be, you know, essentially they take the money and run. Um, and then the second allegation is that the long, the long, the longer term monitoring about ensuring that people really aren't able to do that, and that there is, you know, how do we know that the biodiversity outcomes that are promised are being delivered? I suppose is what I'm, what I'm asking.
So with the biodiversity stewardship agreements, um, and, um, the, but, uh, if you've got one of those agreements and you've got a site, then you need to provide an annual report on how you're, how you're going against the biodiversity gains. Um, that were, that were expected. And certainly, um, the BCT could provide more information. The BCT's got quite a rigorous, um, regime around that reporting. Um, and so each year, uh, a landholder would, would, needs to put forward a report on, on what they're doing. Um, uh, so that we, so then.
Now, just to be clear, that, so that report goes through to the BCT, it's the BCT's responsibility in terms of analyzing, of doing that. I mean, I suppose what I, I'm sure I'll get another opportunity to talk to Mr. Elton and others about this. But, um, people put in a report, what happens with the report? Like, what is, what is, where is the, is there on the ground actual monitoring of this?
Uh, I mean, that is a question for the BCT. I do know they have a rigorous programme around their reporting and their, and, um, and in terms of that, but I, I'll have to take that on, on notice for the BCT. Um, but, uh, yes, so that's how into, that's, that's how, um, the monitoring occurs. Um, because it's, once the site's set up and the site's, you know, set up in perpetuity, and then you have the annual reporting.
And, and Ms. Sharp, I might add to that as well. In the context of major projects, um, uh, we certainly look at those reports that come in as well, and, and there are also quite often requirements for independent audits to be done. And if that's demonstrating that there's non-compliance against the approvals as well, then our compliance team has the ability to take some action there as well.
Okay, so there are some left, but that's just, is that for major projects only?
That, that's for major projects only.
Thank you. Uh, that's all for me. Thanks.
Ms. Sharp, can I just add one, uh, comment to, related to your question, which is, and ties a couple of the two together. I think in terms of, I think you're getting at maximizing the environmental benefit, so the ecological benefit, getting, uh, the, the monitoring and ensuring that, that things are delivered under this five, this stewardship agreements. But there's another level which, which we are looking at, which is how you, what government can do to try and ensure that if there's a certain level of demand, that those credits are sourced in a way that is a bit of strategic oversight. We're getting them in proper areas, connected, you know, landscapes approach. So I think that is something that we're looking at, is part of maximizing the ecological.
Yeah.
Thanks for that. That's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, um, how much time we've got left? Fifteen minutes. I just wanted to, um, go back to the, um, the BioNet that underpins the biodiversity assessment, um, methodology. Um, so how, it, it says here in the, the response to the questions on notices that we provided at, from the last hearing that I referred to earlier. There is this, um, part here where it, where you've, you've, um, said that by, how BioNet is updated and that when there's evidence to suggest an entity is under increased pressure, the department adjusts settings in the biodiversity assessment methodology to better manage this increased risk. Where does BioNet, is it BioNet that suggests that species, for example, are under increased pressure? How is that determined, do you know?
Um, so BioNet is, is where all the data gets fed in. So say, for example, we have accountable officers for, for every, for, for threatened species. And so that they're constantly putting, updating the data, um, in BioNet. Um, and so, uh, so th- there are different sources of information that will then feed into that, and then the assessment method will, will use, will use that.
Okay, so, so the, so the fire, the in fire, fire and environment report that wa- that was, um, produced that we referred to earlier, that, um, was the department produced after the fires. The impact that was, uh, the surveyed impact on multiple threatened species, that's been fed into, as you understand, has it, into BioNet?
My understanding, um, but I'm happy to take that on notice, um, because I'm not sure of the mechanics of it because it's a different part of the group.
Okay, that, that would be useful. So, and if you could also take on notice, just in terms of the questions that I asked before in relation to the total species credits of major projects that have not made their way into finalized biodiversity, uh, into biodiversity stewardship agreements, which is potentially the, the roughly five hundred thousand there of major projects, who would take that on notice with that? Well, just take that on notice.
I'll take it on notice and we'll work through it.
Okay, the, there's been quite a few questions, um, of multiple witnesses as well as concerns raised about the fact that, um, if entities, um, if species, um, are deemed to be at risk of potential serious or irreversible impact, that that doesn't apply to state significant developments. Is that, that correct? State significant developments can basically be granted, um, they may have to consider it, but they can also override that and proceed. Is that correct, Mr. Gainesford?
So, yes, if, if, uh, serious or irreversible impacts, uh, are identified, there is a requirement, um, to do further assessment work. Uh, but you're correct that it, 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 it doesn't override the ability to grant consent. That's correct.
And is there a, is there a central database, if you like, of how many, uh, species have been triggered, if you like, under the serious and irreversible impact? Um, and been, um, been cleared or where that has been, you know, projects have gone ahead? Is there any kind of central database where we can get, uh, any indication of just how much has, has been destroyed?
So, so obviously on a project by project basis, uh, all of the information is documented in our assessment reports. Um, uh, for, what I can say is that, um, uh, doing some research, uh, in, into this topic is that, uh, this is a very rare, um, thing for serious and irreversible impacts to come up on major projects. Um, and I'm not aware of circumstances of where, uh, but I'm happy to take it on notice of circumstances of where we've effectively overridden, uh, a concern that's been raised about serious and irreversible impacts.
Okay, that, that would be, um, that would be excellent. Mr. Pearson, you have a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all going on.
Thank you. Um, how long has these, this offset steam, um, scheme been operating? From the, from, in whatever form, from the very beginning?
It's been about fifteen years of, um, of, of, of offsetting. This particular, um, scheme has been in operation since, uh, two thousand and seventeen.
Two thousand and seventeen?
November two thousand and seventeen it commenced, but it didn't become fully operational across the state until two thousand and nineteen.
And there was no sys- no, no similar sort of mechanism or system before two thousand and seventeen?
Uh, there was, uh, the bio-banking.
Yes.
Um, and, I mean, off, uh, we're, we're the only jurisdiction in Australia that kind of has such a systematic approach to calculating, uh, the impact on biodiversity. There was the bio-banking scheme beforehand, but the biodiversity offset scheme is a, uh, is, is, it's now a requirement for, for, um, all, all major projects and.
Does it include forestry?
Uh, no.
Okay, because it was gonna, I was just going to go to the question as to, um, i- i- if there's confidence that the system is working, was it alarming at all to, to discover that the koala is listed as a critically endangered species? Is that, that, did that, uh, did that cause a serious question to be put to your department as to the efficacy of the biodiversity offset scheme?
Uh, I'm, I'm also responsible for the koala strategy, so I'm concerned about koalas, um, gen- generally. Uh, in terms of the offset scheme, um, the, the scheme takes into account the listing of koalas. Um, and also, um, then.
Did it examine as to how it got, ha- has it examined as to whether the biodiversity offset, offset scheme has failed the koalas? Even though I take into account that forestry doesn't have to, um, look at this issue at all, they just go in and remove trees or whatever. But has it caused an examination of the efficacy?
The, the offset scheme is a very transparent and robust method of calculating the impact on biodiversity of particular developments. Takes into account, um, um, all threatened species, including the koala. Okay, thank you. I.
Mr. Pittsley. Hmm. Mr. Pittsley, could I, I just, and. Atticus. Very concerned about the koala. So I'd like to put that on record. Um, I, I would note those. Sorry, what was it you wanted to put on record? I didn't hear. All right, I said, I'm also very concerned about the koala. Uh, and I just wanted to add the, the decline of the koala is obviously driven by a number of different factors. And many of them have been operating for much longer than the, the offset scheme. I think it's relevant to ask the question as to how effective the game is in relation to the koala. It's a good question, but.
Yeah.
Broader context, the decline is.
Thanks, Mr. Fleming. That's fine. We have had, of course, eighteen months of inquiry into this, so, uh, and a different inquiry. So I might just direct some of, a couple of the final questions, just to, um, you, uh, Ms. Emery, if I can, around water infrastructure projects. I'm curious, for example, when, uh, the assessment for, uh, let's say Dunggowan Dam and the impact that Dunggowan Dam will have in terms of biodiversity offsets. Is it just the footprint of the inundation area that is being assessed for biodiversity offsets? Or is it the impact that the dam will have on, for example, downstream, uh, riverine, uh, riparian uh, environments or wetlands, for example?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Fairman. Uh, the biodiversity impacts of dam projects can be separated into four components. Um, so there's construction impacts, so that'll be the direct impacts during the construction period. And those, um, credits need to be, uh, acquired prior to construction commencing. There's also the inundation impacts, which are, um, the, the, the direct impacts under the, uh, the BAM. Um, that's up to the full supply level. There's also the flood surcharge, uh, area, which is between the full supply level and the probable maximum flood. Um, and that's the area that's subject to temporary inundation, um, and it's considered prescribed or uncertain impacts. And then it also does consider the downstream impacts arising from modified flows and flood behaviour, um, which are also considered to be prescribed impacts.
Okay, and so you're, uh, considering, for example, say with, um, with, uh, Dunggowan Dam with, with the, um, let's say, the impacts of downstream, like reduced downstream flow. with the, let's say, the impacts of downstream, like reduced downstream flows that dams will inevitably, particular dams will inevitably cause, how, how is that offset? I, say a wetland that gets less water or a river that, that becomes increasingly degraded, what do offsets look like for riverine environments in particular?
So there's two different types of offsets, as I'm sure you're aware, there's the biodiversity or the terrestrial offsets, and then there's also the aquatic offset, so we need to take both of those into consideration. The impacts on the, the riverine environment, it falls exactly underneath the biodiversity offset scheme, so we still have to assess those impacts and mitigate, either avoid, mitigate, and then offset on a like-for-like basis.
Because this hasn't been done before in New South Wales then, has it? We haven't had a major dam built for, for decades, the scheme has only been in place for, well, any sort of offset scheme has only been in place for 15 years, so you're basically looking at something that we've never attempted before, and it, it is a question, even in terms of like-for-like, like, are you going to, how are you going to improve, say, for example, a river, if we have, take Wayangler Dam, if it goes ahead, will have severe impacts on Lachlan River, in the Lachlan region, swamps and wetlands, so how, that's never been done before. Is there research going on within water infrastructure in New South Wales, do you know about this?
So, yes, you are 100% correct, this has not been done before under the current scheme, biodiversity offset scheme, so it is a very new field. I know that the Department of Planning and Assessment, the Planning and Approvals Team is working very closely on ensuring that we are using an appropriate methodology to, to be able to assess those. What happens is that it will change the flow regime, so it will change the frequency with which some of these wetlands will be inundated, and it's about understanding how to impact, to assess those impacts and mitigate those.
Can you enlighten us in any way about how exactly the government is looking at ways in which to offset increasingly degraded rivers as a result of new dam projects?
I'd probably have to take that on notice, Ms Fairman.
And how, whether we've successfully offset impacts on wetlands for internationally significant migratory birds, have we done that before?
Sorry, I've just, sorry, just back to your previous question, so there's a use of an agreed methodology with the Environment and Heritage based on the BAM methodology, and yes, it's never been attempted before, and significant consultation with agencies is, is being undertaken to agree on the methodology and the offset calculation, but with regards to the migratory birds, I may have to turn to Ms Dumazel, but my understanding is that migratory birds are not considered a part of the biodiversity offset scheme.
It's a, it's a consideration for the Commonwealth under matters of national environment significance.
So, okay, I'm not sure, Mr Gaines...
Well, if I can just add that my understanding is that both Dungawen and Wayangler are being done as a credited process under the Commonwealth scheme as well, so...
Accredited process, did you say?
Sorry, an accredited process, which, which means that effectively the assessment also needs to take into account the Environment Protection and Biodiversity Conservation Act elements as well.
So we will, we will be looking at that.
So just quickly, because, because it has been, got a lot of attention, that the offsets for these dams are actually quite, you know, quite expensive in terms of the inundation area themselves, and of course then the impacts on rivers, so that's a, that's a lot of offsets that we're still not sure what's going to be offset, like where we're going to find, if it's like-for-like, whether that's even possible. It's like hundreds of million dollars potentially, that we just don't know where we're going to find the offsets for.
So the modeling is still being undertaken for both the Dungawen and the Wayangler Dam projects. The downstream impacts for the, for Dungawen Dam are anticipated to be relatively minor. This is initial, this is based on the initial hydrological assessments, which show minimal impacts in the Peel River. There's a decrease in the base flow, but there are higher spills, but there are substantial impacts in the Dungawen Creek. The impacts can potentially be mitigated through a more effective use of the environmental contingency allowance, but there are no high-value biodiversity features downstream, including wetlands or flood-dependent vegetation, that's probably...
Very different for, for Wayangler though.
The assessment's still underway for Wayangler, and we're looking at opportunities to mitigate some of those impacts before we go with the, the biodiversity offset scheme. So we're still doing the hydrological modeling to understand what those, those impacts are in terms of their scale, but also in terms of how we might be able to mitigate those.
Thank you, I wish I started this round of questions earlier, actually, because we're now out of time, but thank you very much for all appearing today, that we have run out of time for this afternoon's session, appreciate you making yourselves available, you have taken numerous things on notice, so the, the secretary will be in touch with you regarding those questions on notice, which I believe at this stage you have 21 days to respond to once they contact you, and we may also, of course, give you more questions on notice, supplementary questions as well. So thank you very much for, for appearing, and that is the end of today's hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.